Did you want to see something in it?
Yeah, I will.
Just this overview.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the November 7th meeting of the school board. We've invited the budget committee to come as we do our budget review session. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with budget allegiance. Budget allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with a written justice for all.
Chair Ames is not here yet, but I anticipate that she's on her way. So I'll, as the vice chair, I will step in and I guess turn it over to Dr. Jetty and Mr. Totten to begin the review process.
Excellent. Thank you. So here we are for our second night. This evening we're going to focus on our overall programming in the district plus special services and support services for students. So on the overview screen, there are questions from session one that I'll pull up for us to take a peek at. There was one question, I believe, that was submitted by Chairman Sun relative to Chromebooks at LMS, and it was really asking the question about if the Chromebooks in fifth grade are not going home, so they're school-based Chromebooks this year, why is there a fee collected for the insurance? So that was assigned, so that came in on the second. It was assigned to IT Director Jamrog and Principal Grantham, and they have responded on the third that essentially, just a reminder that although the Chromebooks are not going home, they are still being carried throughout the day in the hallways, and so there is a potential that damage could occur there. And that they are able to sign the Chromebooks out to take those home, and certainly as cold weather approaches, which is starting to hint at a potential day eventually where we'll be canceling schooling, having a remote learning day, then the Chromebooks will be home at that point in time. So it is a self-funded program, and really the $25 is just collected to have a pool to repair the Chromebooks if they were to be damaged. And so that's the answer to the question that was asked. The other thing, and I'll let Doug do this because he did something I don't know how to do. He updated the website. So Doug, fill us in on what you did.
So yeah, last week we talked about how the budget kind of starts at the schools and then ends with the local control, local taxpayers. So we want to make sure that people are informed as we kind of go throughout the process as well. So if anybody wants to see what we're talking about line by line, they could go to the district site and then go to the district tab, and then down to finance and operations, and then budget information. And then under current information, it's fiscal year '25 budget information. And currently in there, there'll be more, it'll grow from here. There is requested for food service and requested for Fun 10. So if we click on the Fun 10 one.
Double click.
Double click. Great. I don't know if you can make it a little bit bigger. So as people are looking at this, if we scroll down to page three. So keep scrolling a little bit. So bottom of page three, just want to explain, we use a lot of notes. So it helps us kind of remember what we were talking about next year, but it also kind of helps explain where these numbers come from. And some of these numbers are large, but it's kind of the sum of several unique lines that create that budget line. So if you look at supplies, you can see that, and this is supplies for GMS. It's, you know, a sum of $30,037. And the first things that you start seeing in the notes, which talked about general supplies, have all zeros next to them. So the way that we have it is if the note doesn't fit within one line, we start with zeros and you keep reading until you hit a number. So you keep reading and you can see that the first five lines all go towards that $26,910, which are general supplies for grades K through four with some more description above that. So if you see zeros, the goal of that is to kind of keep reading until you see a number, and that will give you a little bit more information. So the budget's on there. We'll keep adding more budgets. Remember, we are in kind of the requested superintendent's budget now. Then we're moving right currently into the school board budget. So it'll be, once we finalize that, that will be updated on there. And then we'd be moving into the budget committee, and then we'd be moving into the voted upon budget after that. So, and then one more thing I want to show. Can you bring up that spreadsheet?
This one? Nope. This one.
That one.
Yep.
So as we go through, we are getting information that we didn't have like, say, two weeks ago. We've been able to get a contracted rate for propane and for oil. So that would be some changes that we'd be asking for the budget. But we're also listening to people too. So when we created the LMS, the porta potty for sports there, it wasn't budgeted in the past. So when I saw that, I created the budget, I assumed it was for both the spring and the fall season. That's not the case. It is only for the spring season. So went back and, you know, we can reduce the budget due to that as well. So as we're hearing things, we are reacting in a way which makes sense for the budget, makes sense for the town. So since we're in the school board budget, for these to have an impact on the budget, it would have to have a school board vote, which might come later tonight, or it might come tomorrow, or it could come on the 15th. All different, three different times when the school board is meeting about the budget. And then obviously the school board might, they'll be making other motions as well. But we try to track the ones that kind of make sense as we're working through the budget.
All right. So were there any other questions from session one that people wanted to ask? Are you ready to get into tonight's presentation? All right. So introducing tonight, our first speaker will be Lauren Crowley, who is our dining services director. And Lauren will be walking you through the food services budget that is in your materials.
All right. Okay. Okay. So I'm just going to dive right in. Some of the biggest budget drivers we have this year mostly is food cost. Obviously, food cost will not go back down. It will continue to climb, and we've based our food budget lines. We've increased everybody, all three schools. And that's based on what we spent actuals last year. So we've kind of moved that over. We also have an increase in participation at all of the schools. And, you know, we need, got to feed the kids. So, you know, more mouths to feed, more food needs to be purchased. And I'm happy to go through that later. The other big, and I say big, it's really not, I just want to go on record and say, this is a forced migration. Meals Plus, which is under the umbrella company link, is being dropped, and we are being forced to move to Titan, which is under the same parent company. I'm not thrilled about it, but they're sunsetting Meals Plus. And basically by October 2024, it will not be in operation anymore. So to migrate over to this, it's going to create an additional $535 expense into the budget, which we are anticipating an expected reduction in FY '26 by $2170 going forward. Actually, year to year, it is cheaper than what we're already paying for Meals Plus anyway. And if I had known this four years ago when we switched to Meals Plus, I would have just switched to Titan, but here we are. Couple additional increases. So I have added in $200 on the director's line and at each school for serve-safe sanitation certifications. It's a state law that the director, the lead, and at least one tech at each school has the serve-safe certification in sanitation. That cost covers their class, their tests, their books, and any travel. I also put in $500 because we are feeding more kids. We don't have enough pans to feed and cook the food for the kids. So we budgeted $500 at each school to get more pans. And then I also increased my travel line by $415. That includes travel to this year's annual national conference for SNA, which is in Boston. And it more adequately reflects what I actually do for mileage than what I have in the past. So I do a lot of driving weekly, and 500 bucks in that particular mileage line will be, is what I'm asking for. And then in terms of level funding, all of our supplies, we just level funded because those actually did decrease by 31% from last year's paper bid. And I'm also requesting a decrease of LMS line 734 from $4,810 to zero during the whole budget process. We came up with and discovered a better way to do vending that will actually be more suited to what middle school would need. And instead of going and buying a new machine, we are going to be working with a vendor who will provide us a machine and therefore take care of all the costs of repair and all this other, any kind of costs associated with it, delivery, the whole nine, and we just have to fill it. I will now take questions.
Just on that line?
Yes.
Lauren, there's also another line item for $500 for new hotel cans.
That's part of the $500 pan for each school.
So we're not reducing the line to zero. We're reducing the line by 20.
My apologies. Just the $4,810 then, down to, get rid of the $4,810. Sorry.
Yep.
That was poorly worded.
All right. Board members, we're going to start with page one. Any questions on page one? Page two? Hearing none. Moving on to page three. Hearing end. Then we go to another page one. Page two. And this is where that food increases that you were talking about.
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions on page two? Page three? And page four? All right. Any general questions from the school board?
Yes. I'm actually going to jump into the business section, page three. The reason for that is that's where we're covering the food service revenue transfer. So in this budget, there's $100,000 for the first time. While you're here and while you have the mic, it's important to talk about that.
Absolutely.
How are we doing this year with food service costs and how are we tracking? I know you had a report two, three months ago at this point, right?
So we're, and I'm going to be presenting to the board on the 6th of December. So I don't have all that information readily available right now because I will be presenting at that point. But I actually, I don't even know if I can answer that right now because I don't want to say if it's good or bad. And if I don't have that, I wasn't prepared to answer that tonight.
Okay.
Lauren, if you talked, so maybe less about this year because it's not, we're still early in the year. But if you talk in generalities about what has happened and why the $100,000.
Right.
Is included. That might help.
Yeah. So we did include that $100, $100,000 line to help alleviate a little bit of whatever we had to transfer over at the end of the year if there is a deficit in the food service program. Doug, do you want to speak a little more to that?
Yeah. So last year, as people know, because we talked about it a couple of different times at the school board meeting, we ran a deficit in the food service budget. It's supposed to come out zero. You know, the revenue that you take in is supposed to match your expenses. We did not. We lucked out last year where we had $127,000, a little over that, food service balance from the year before when everyone was kind of free for both breakfast and lunch. A lot of schools were able to benefit from that. A lot of states stayed with that. New Hampshire was not one of the states that stayed with that. So we had to transfer $127,000 or use that $127,000 fund balance as well as transfer over $16,000 from the general fund. So the reasons why we think we needed that about $140,000 and why we think we're going to need probably roughly another $140,000 this year, and if not next year, is that while we increased our prices, the board increased the prices going into last fiscal year, it wasn't enough to kind of match the increase in prices of food costs. And, you know, we've all experienced those increases of food costs, whether we're at McDonald's or whether we're at a different restaurant. You know, no matter where you go, you're experiencing the fact that everything has gone up by a lot. So this year, the board made a decision not to increase the prices again, which in a lot of ways does make sense because at the end of the day, kids learn better if they're fed. And while some parents can kind of afford the increase in prices, not everyone can. And I think it kind of goes with what a lot of states are doing, which is providing free meals for everybody. New Hampshire's not doing that, but what Litchfield did in a way was they subsidized within their town. Where if you're in Massachusetts and you're subsidizing the whole state, your tax money is going to multiple different places. And Litchfield, you know, it's staying within the town. So last year, we were able to kind of deal with that deficit more from a fund balance, but we don't have that fund balance going forward. So while we're going to predict, you know, a deficit of over $100,000, we need to start preparing for that. And so we either need to prepare by raising prices. But again, if we raise prices too much, then you're going to have more people not choosing to eat at school. So we either need to raise prices or kind of provide some other revenue in order to get to zero. So instead of kind of relying on there to be money at the end of the year, knowing that there's going to be a deficit, fund that deficit to some point as well. We're not the only school district that does something like this. You know, a lot of times with school districts, how many students there matters. So, you know, a lot of the costs are divided over more kids. Where in Litchfield, you know, when you have about 400 or so kids per school, it's divided by less kids. So we are, we're at a point where we are running a great program. Kids seem to be happy, you know, year over year. Since Lauren's been here, we increased percentage of kids. But that comes with having quality food and, you know, staffing it the right way as well in order to kind of have those meals which are beneficial for kids, beneficial for learning. So we wanted to be proactive in knowing if we're going to have a deficit, there's only so many different ways you can fund a deficit.
And what I will say to your question about like the spending and things, I've created a very intricate spreadsheet that every time I pay bills. So I pay bills at the end of the month because really I only have like five main bills I pay pretty consistently, which is food and supplies, milk, that whole nine. And I have a thing that does each school and each line of each, of the budget for each school. So if I spend a hundred bucks on milk out of the middle school, it goes and pulls it right out of that, and it kind of, I've been tracking it that way. I've also been tracking it with what we get for reimbursement at each school and for what we get for deposits, both online and in-person deposits. And so I can't say it against like what we've spent in terms of salaries and stuff like that on the big picture, but I know from what I'm tracking on my backend, it's ending in a positive note so far each month. But once I, like I said, once we go into the presentation on the 6th, I'll have a little bit more solid information for you.
And for that meeting, just to give you sort of a notice, I guess.
Yeah.
If you could refresh where Litchfield falls in rates with other surrounding districts. I know that's a metric you provided in the past.
Absolutely. Happy to do it.
And just for Matt's awareness, I know you're new to the board, right? We were trending on the higher, higher to highest side already for rates, which is why we're sensitive to continued increases in prices.
And by rate, you mean the meal.
The food, the food, yeah.
I know, I know. Yeah, I can, I'll happily provide that for you. No problem. Yeah, no worries.
Any other general board questions? All right. I'll open up to the budget committee in the back. Do you have questions for Lauren?
Yeah, I have a question on that $100,000 also. Lauren, how many meals are served total?
I don't have that number exactly on, for last year total. It was about 90,000 lunches and about, I want to say maybe 50,000 breakfasts. I could be wrong, but definitely 90,000 on the lunches.
I'm sure we'll have those stats for December.
Yes, absolutely. That will, I just didn't have it with me this evening.
So what we'll do for December is we'll have information through a point of this year, and then we'll divide it by that amount of days, and then we'll project out for 180, 178 days. And the reason we use 178 sometimes is because if there is a snow day that becomes a kind of work-at-home day, a remote day for the students, then there are no students coming in to purchase those meals or to purchase snacks as well. So we don't strictly go off 180 day. We've been tending to go off 178 now.
Yeah.
Any other budget committee questions?
I have a quick question. And I don't expect an answer immediately. Have you looked at if there was a decrease in the amount of lunches bought after the prices increased?
There was no decrease. It actually increased.
Okay.
Yeah. Participation did continue to climb after that initial, yeah, the increase in April.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from budget committee? Last chance for the board. Any other questions on food service? Hearing none. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. So we're going to shift into buildings and grounds. And so Dave Ross is here with us this week. Dave, have you had any luck yet this week?
No.
No luck yet. Sorry. Dave's been out hunting and it's annual hunting time. But he's joined us for the budget presentation because it's night.
I just had a huge buck in my backyard yesterday.
Of course it did.
But Dave and Doug collaborated pretty closely on this budget. So they're going to kind of co-present as they work their way through where we are with buildings.
Yeah. So at a previous board meeting, we talked about how there's only one custodian at night at each of the buildings. And then there's also a lot less custodians as well as grounds people. We're one out of our two grounds people. So Dave has been pulled in many directions last school year and this year. School year, he's like similar other staff within the buildings because we are short-staffed in certain areas. So it's definitely a teamwork on this one because I recognize that Dave is either fixing a spraying machine, fixing a lawn mower, mowing himself, you know, putting in new filters. It's a lot for three big buildings, you know, two decent-sized yards. And then middle school doesn't have much of a grass to it. But there's just a lot going on. So we'll tag Keen a little, and Dave definitely has more of the boots-on-the-ground type of knowledge about these buildings more than anybody else does, which I appreciate. So last year, as I sat here for the first time, the big thing with the budget was energy prices. They were going up to levels that we hadn't seen really for a really long time. We had been lucky, you know, in some ways for what we had all been paying for electricity, oil, and propane. And I think this table shows that as well. So if we go back to '21 and we can see the cost for electricity, oil, and propane, we would all love to have that. As we went into the budgeting season last year, we were even thinking that we were going to have costs higher than we ended up getting as well. So going into next year, fiscal year '25, we have been able to contract out some rates that are lower. One of the reasons we decided to go ahead and contract those rates is that with the, you know, escalating, you know, almost a second war now going on. You've got Ukraine, which, you know, brought a lot of instability to the energy market in Europe, which then brought as much energy that the US could ship over there. If we had more shipping containers, they would ship more over there because they are paying a premium for everything that arrives on their shores. So that is still going on, and now we have more of a conflict in the Middle East as well. So we're not quite sure what's going to happen with those energy costs. You know, the person that we work with in regards to electricity that helps us lock in the rates, he believes that, you know, we talked about electricity, you know, it wasn't too long ago that we could be at eight cents. He said, I don't think we're going to be seeing eight cents for several years. There's just too much demand in Europe for things that, energy that we can ship over there, which then decreases what we have here. So tough news is, you know, we're still at higher rates, but good news is we are lower than we are for this current year. So that has already brought down, just in general, the buildings and ground budget, and that was with electricity. Some of the asset will be, at some point will be motions by the board to bring down it for oil and propane because we were budgeting off of this year's costs until we contracted out. So if we go to the next slide, we can see that overall buildings and grounds has a reduction, which again, we're looking to reduce even more. A lot of that does come from the electric, which is $59,000 down compared to budget for this year. Oil, we can reduce it to $8,360 compared to fiscal year '24. Part of it's already there, and then part of it, you know, would be realized with a school board motion. Propane, you know, we can get it down to, from last year's budget, $17,150. Rubbish removal was over 10% reduction, which a lot of credit goes to Anne Inomoradi on that. She's been in contact quite a bit with waste management and other people in waste management, knowing that we weren't exactly happy with their price. They went down, which is going to benefit us. I think they overreached with how much they went up in the last year or two. And so I think it's a correction in the other way, which is good. So definitely a decent amount of reductions. We do have some increases. Litchfield, I feel bad for people living in Litchfield there. The water costs have been rising. And we've seen that with around 20% increases for two years in a row. I don't believe that things can stay at 20%. I think there needs to be a correction at some point on that as well. So we put in 10% increases, you know, to get us to fiscal year '25 on that. And then as you look through the budget, you'll see some increases in supplies as we try to kind of match what we know the going prices are. Property and liability insurance, realization, and there's some other increases in there as well. Dave, anything you want to add?
Well, I think you nailed it. There's a few underspends for the Litchfield middle school, and a lot of that is due from the new construction. They did a lot of their own repairs. They did a lot of their own cleaning. Therefore, we didn't have to use our equipment. We didn't have to use our chemicals. That's about that.
Doug, how do you get to the reduction of $30,693 if I add up three lines below?
That is, if you look at buildings and grounds without the staff, like this segment that we're looking at right now without staff, and you compare it to fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25, that's what we started with. And then the oil and the propane, that's why I chose to use the words, can be reduced because they've been reduced by part of that number, but not the full thing because we weren't using the new contracted rates. So but when we first started this budget, the budget itself was down by that $30,693.
Okay.
So I appreciate you asking that because as I was writing it up, I'm like, what's going to be the most clear way? And there was no real clear way. So I'm glad we went over that a couple of times.
Thank you.
All right. Any other general questions? Any questions on page one? Page two?
Sorry, page one, property and liability insurance. Is that an actual number for next year, the $66,000 all the way down to the bottom?
So page two, yes.
I'm sorry, page two.
Yep.
Page three? Page four?
So just to confirm on water rates for page three, and really there's several pages here. We're adding 10% as you just presented. We've also added into your point significant increases over the last three years, and we're adding yet another 10%.
We went up, so just for GMS, GMS water went up by 19.98% from fiscal year '21 to '22. From fiscal year '22 to '23, it went up 25.94%. Again, I don't think it can keep going up by that amount, but it's hard for me to say it's not going to go up at all. So the last rates that we have is fiscal year '23. So to get to fiscal year '25, we have two years. So 10%, you know, added on to fiscal year '23 to get to '24, and then another 10% to get to '25 because we're working off the actual rates for that. So it's 10% over two years is how we're getting to it. Hopefully, there'll be a correction, and that line will be underspent when it comes to fiscal year '25.
As it relates to improvements in the buildings, right? We renovated the middle school. We're looking at options for an elementary school. I don't know that I've heard any discussion about, and whether it's even possible, like production and water usage. I mean, obviously you have things like low, lower flow fixtures and stuff like that. But has there been any?
More on the town side. There's, I think, discussions being had on water in general across the entire town. So more to come.
I will say that a project we did at the high school was to put a water boosting pump in because the pressure there was absolutely horrible. And so there were multiple flushes. And so there were multiple flushes being done, you know, sinks were trickling and so forth. So, you know, did that increase or decrease the water usage is a really good question. But it was a project that was necessary to make that work. But I think, Dave, you're putting in like the low, can't think of the term, the low-consumption faucets and so forth when you can, right? So.
Yeah, be efficient, very efficient. They have automatic off-on, so you press on them and they just come right off. Gives you a minute to wash your hands and get right out. That's what we hope anyway.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Page four?
Well, still on page three, on general repairs and maintenance, line 430, I noted the $41,829 budgeted, which is the exact same as the current year. Just curious if that number is good, given inflation and...
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, anything else on page three then? Page four? Page five?
On page five, I guess more of a question for you, Mr. Todd, can we update the description on line 622, the set price from power purchase agreement? Can we call that like the solar annual payment line or something, you know what I mean? So it's clear that...
Yeah, well, I mean, we could definitely update it. What's gonna help, because I, I mean, the Board hears about it all the time, but I think, yeah, as the town people kinda look at it too.
I was questioning, it's like, why are we still paying electric, like to, to the electric company, Eversource, if the building's on solar, right, for fiscal year '25? But that's actually not what this is. This is now the annual lease loan payment?
Lease loan payment, yeah.
For solar?
For solar, but also for the electricity that's going into the building.
So I guess how are we differentiating this versus the annual Bank of America payment that we now have to? Is there, it's just to a different vendor?
It is to a different vendor and for a different purpose. I mean, this specifically gets us our electricity. I mean, I can double-check with some other people. I have a regional BA meeting tomorrow. I can kinda ask how they would kind of, what line they'd put it in as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, definitely go somewhere in the budget. Whether it goes there, for me, it's thinking that's how we're also getting our electricity. We're still gonna get bills from Eversource. Those bills are then gonna go to Dynamic Grid, and they pay for the bills, and we pay them the $95,120 for the whole year.
Okay. And if we keep it here, that's fine. I would just ask that for annual budget reviews, we keep track of solar payment one of X.
Okay.
One of seven, two of seven, three of seven. Thank you.
Any other questions? Page five? Page six?
Sorry, back on page five, on annual maintenance for sewer and grease traps. It's budgeted at $52.50 for CHS, and it's $2,600 for LMS. I'm just curious.
They're all different-sized tanks.
Okay.
So, yeah, everything went up this year significantly as the amseptics sold to a different company. They went up on their prices. They can't find anybody to do it anymore. Yeah, they've all gone up. And you can't justify one building from another as they all have different-sized tanks.
Well, that was my question, right?
Yeah.
Why is there such a large difference between the schools? But it's different sizes?
Much, yeah, much different sizes.
Alright, thank you.
Page six? Page seven?
On the kid cushion at GMS, is that an annual? Do you apply that annually?
We do, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sometimes twice, two applications.
Page seven and next, page eight?
North Point for grounds, has that gone out to RFP? Is that a competitive bid?
That has not, no. Last year, they did a trigger renewal on us. We didn't realize that. So we renewed, didn't realize we renewed. You've got a certain time to cancel. They do fertilization just at Campbell High School, just on the fields. And the fields have been looking really good. I know we had a lot of rain and everything, but the fields have never looked that nice. We've had other companies where it just, it was terrible. Crown grass and it was just...
We had another company that came and looked, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, they wanted to, if they were fertilizing, they wanted to do the whole maintenance as far as mowing the lawn, trimming.
Correct. So the company we had in, which was a local company, they wanted to do the mowing, they wanted to do the service and maintenance on the sprinkler irrigation systems, and the whole nine yards. That's the contract they were...
But given we're short-staffed, is that a viable option for the district?
Well, not for all three schools. The particular company did this part-time, so maybe just the high school. I think the pricing was, would have been astronomical, to the point where he didn't even price it out, he ended up walking away. We did ask for pricing.
And the winterization and irrigation opening is a new line item this year in the budget?
It's nothing new. We're taking that out of a different account. I think we just minimize that account now and put all in one. So maybe it's a work. That cost is the same going forward, and it has been for the last five years.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Page eight? Page nine? Ten? Eleven?
Annual HVAC service and maintenance for CHS specifically, right?
Yes. That's the Viking controls, so they're a remote company that can adjust and do maintenance from off-line just remotely.
Yeah, and we're paying a service for that.
That's correct, and they come down and do all the maintenance.
It looks like a weekly fee for that that we pay, right? So my question here for annual HVAC, and they do that for all three schools, I see, right? So why is it so significantly more for CHS than it is for the other two schools? We pay $18,000 for, we pay $28,000 for, well, it's budgeted for $28,000 for CHS. We pay, well, it's in the budget for $18,000 for GMS and $2,000 for LMS.
I think Campbell, the age that it is, all the units have the Viking controls, and they're all burning out. So they're coming in like all the time doing maintenance, repairs, replacements. This school here is probably gonna be the next one for a complete renovation for HVAC. We're having a hard time controlling them.
That's part of the issue.
So if we went back a couple of years, LMS would have been a lot larger than 2000. We made the decision to bring it down, because it's all new equipment under warranty, but that will start to kinda trickle up at some point as well. You know, we're not gonna start by bringing it from 2000 to 28,000. But, you know, we do, when Viking sees something online, then, you know, Dave and I were just looking at something yesterday as far as they saw something online. They came in, they reset some breakers, they also did some other work when they came in physically as well. And so the good part is that they're catching the things a lot sooner, which means that our ventilation system is working in a better way. And when you have, you know, 400-plus people in a building, and you're actually circulating the air, bringing in the clean outside air, and circulating the air, and heating it the right way, it's better for all. So it's ended up being better air quality, and that's from them kinda continually catching things.
All sounds great. I'm still struggling with, right, if it's due to age and the increase, that's cool. But when I look at GMS, I think about age, and GMS is 18 versus 28.
You don't have a lot of the controls as the Campbell High School has. A lot of that stuff I take care of my own.
Okay. So it's a more modern system.
That's getting old.
That's getting old. As opposed to just a really old system.
Cranks and gerbils keep us warm.
But Campbell's a 20-year-old system over 20 years, and one compressor went out last year, and it was over $10,000 to repair one compressor, right? So, and that's one 20-year-old compressor out of many 20-year-old compressors. So that's why the money is there, versus GMS doesn't even have the...
And GMS is, what's it, compressor?
You have, yeah, you have one compressor in total, so when it goes, we're good, once we fix it. Very different system.
Very different system, but I'm just looking, we have a reserve account for that too, right? Buildings and repairs capital reserve account?
Yep, we do, yep.
And that reserve account has $106,000 in it.
How many compressors are there?
Dozens.
Dozens?
Dozens. For Campbell High School, dozens.
So I mean, depending on how many compressors.
They're large. They're so large, right, it requires a crane to remove them off the roof and put them on. They're quite large.
How many of them, what's a lifespan on one of those?
Well, we've gotten 23 years out of them.
And how many of them have been replaced?
We've had two replaced in the last three years.
Dozens, so there's two that are replaced, so I guess the question is...
Possibly it doesn't.
Doesn't.
And each unit requires two, so one takes a break, the other one kicks in, and they run a two-stage.
But let's just say we have 12 to replace, we have $10,000. I mean, obviously, hopefully, they wouldn't all go, but...
That's just a one-year...
Anything else on page 11? Page 12?
The radios, additional two radios, the Board encumbered $40,000 for purchase of radios recently. Why are we asking for an additional two?
Hi, is Jen here?
I'm here.
Jen is here. I don't think you put that on the budget, did you? That might have been just a carryover from the budget. I saw that the other day, and I was wondering the same thing myself. So I think that was just a carryover that doesn't need to be there, because we have between the safe grant as well as the Board, when we came to the Board at the end of last year and said, hey, the safe grant did a decent amount. We didn't get around to the safe grant, but we, in a timely manner, we need to get more radios. Thankfully, the Board said yes to that, so we can strike that. I think we carry over the notes, and we do a pretty good job of making sure that they're up to date, but that one slipped by us.
So, let's say it wasn't part of this last year, the reduction in supplies on the bottom of page 11 from $58,000. Was there some sort of, assuming there was some sort of big expenditure last year that is not...
So that, that would be the radios. Yeah, so that was the money that got encumbered from fiscal year '23, got moved into '24 so we could purchase the radios, which we heard, just good news, that they're gonna be here this week. Need to be programmed after that, and then they'll be brought to each of the three schools.
So Doug, you're proposing to cut to $1,000, even $750,000, then it would be identical to CHS and LMS?
Yes.
Anything else on 12 or 13?
I have a general, I guess, 12 or 13, because I have a general question, this is only two of these pages. But when the principals are presenting on the furniture, I asked a question about, does changing any of this furniture out make your job easier in moving through the schools? I have another hypothetical question, because I'm gonna use a ridiculous example, because this may or may not exist, and if it does, it could be very, very expensive. But is there any sort of technology or anything at this point that can be used or implemented in caring for the schools that can reduce manpower, since we're having trouble hiring? So I use a stupid example, a Roomba.
Like the robot at Sam's Club?
A Roomba.
That almost runs you over every time?
Sure, right, like, we don't want to run kids over, but...
But at night, when nobody's there.
Yeah.
We have a rock-behind auto scrubber at each school.
Yep.
What would help us greatly would be the robot for striping the fields.
And I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking you to add something, $100,000, I understand that, but in the context of, you know, we're having conversations about having personnel problems, you know, trying to find people, so...
We have pretty decent equipment in these buildings, and I maintain them. It's a matter of changing on batteries, it's real simple stuff. Now, we have...
But the equipment's operated by people.
It is.
And so we either have to, my question is, is there equipment that reduces time even more to reduce the need for more people? Or alternatively, Roomba, Roombas, commercial-grade Roombas. I know it sounds stupid, but I mean, you know, if we get to a point where we can't hire people and we don't have help, like, it's at least worth having a conversation.
Something to think about is, like I said, I just said, is the robot for striping fields for athletics. For the amount of time that we need, myself, I'm out in the field, striping fields, lining fields, measuring with the one grounds person that we do have, I'm out there two full days. So you're talking me and that gentleman each eight hours, 16 hours per week, striping fields. With a robot, alls you have to do is take an iPad, say, "Robot, football field, go."
So maybe do easy math on that to figure out what that costs and how much we pay you guys. I'm sure that that's, you know, I'm...
It's 20 grand.
Oh, I thought it was much less.
That was like the...
I think it's a little bit less than 20 grand. So we had priced it out, they had, they came with a robot. They were the ones who originally lined our lacrosse field at Campbell last year. It was great to watch, great to see.
Can they do it yet?
We'll see you tomorrow, we said, so, yeah. So when we looked at pricing it out, we looked at, you know, hours per striping of the fields, how many people it is for the original striping, and then how many times per year after that we have to stripe it. And it was under the cost for the robot. Now, with that being said, we believe right now we have, in the budget, two full-time grounds people, which therefore qualify for benefits, and benefits is medical and dental at that point too. We were at a point where we had zero grounds people, which really meant that we had Dave out there, we had the coaches out there, we had Josh out there, we had kids out there, and it was a lot to keep up with, especially if it rained one or two days, that type of thing. So we believe that if we got the robot, we could go down to one and a half grounds people, which at that point eliminates medical and dental for that halftime person. So the robot is almost paid for itself, is paid for itself if the person had elected, you know, a family or a two-person plan or something like that. And as, you know, it would be great to get up to two grounds people, but we haven't had really anybody apply. We moved somebody from custodial staff to grounds. That's the only reason why we have one full-time grounds person too. So we do think it's very viable. If we went with the robot liner, it wouldn't pay for itself. It wouldn't equal itself out by what we'd be saving if we lined it ourselves. I think there was about a $4,000 difference with that.
But that's just the fresh year, right? That's just year one, wouldn't it?
It's the same price every year. You don't own the robot, you lease the robot.
One, one, one...
Ding ding ding.
Yeah.
Energy actor.
Yeah. Yeah.
One major key factor is they will also supply the paint for the entire season, the athletics season, which added up to quite a bit, and we did some figuring out. And nobody stops to think about when that pump burnt out on the spray machine that I had to take apart, rebuild, order all new pots. Why? Because there's no company in New England that will repair these machines anymore. They all went out of business. So I'm rebuilding the pumps, I rebuilt the sprayer a couple times, back, all back up and running. Matter of fact, I think that's gonna be my next business.
So the delta is what, what was the difference in...
It was about $4,000 or so.
We have a detailed spreadsheet that we can share with the Board so that you can see where those numbers fall. But again, it's a lease. The beauty is they then maintain it and command it, so...
So there's two different lease numbers. One, the lower one, you get the product, and then if something fails on the product, they send you the part, and you fix the part. The higher lease program, you get the product, and then you also have on your shelves two or three of the main things that might fail. And if it's not one of those things, they ship you a new one. Well, not a new one, but a replacement one while they fix the current one. So, you know, if we did a reduction of the staff, it would make more sense for us to get the one where we're guaranteed type of use of it. And with that too, what the company does is they would come, they would spend hours with us on one day, and they'd program in all the fields, as well as we could have them do, you know, town fields too, because, you know, it's better if we share, things like this. And then when we wanted to, the robot to go, we just use the iPad, and we press a button, and the robot does it. If we feel that during lacrosse, that by the goalie's area, it's getting, it's getting pretty rough, we can just simply take about a minute to move the field over by 10 feet, left or right, back or forward, and then it does it all on its own again as well. So it could, you know, for, I don't know if we're able to do the football helmets on the field this year with the painting, but you can have that programmed in as well, so... So, um, it can also help you set up for for graduation, where if graduation was outside, you could use a slightly different color green and you can have it do arcs where, you know, now when you're setting up the chairs, get some help from the kids, we'll put the chair on the arc. And then you know it's gonna look nice because of the fact that it's it's precisely measured by this this robot.
I I don't wanna get lost in the luxury, right? Like, you're you're highlighting some awesome components to this, right? But my driving factor is numbers on paper are not reflecting the implications of not having staff, right? Uh, we we can't, it it, if they do, it's it's a savings because we don't have a salary that we're paying, right? So when you look at this in the context of a budget, I just wanna highlight that point right now because we need to be looking, as we sit as a board and we meet about staffing shortages that we are desperately trying to figure out how to fill, we do need to think about alternatives to those things. So I I'm purely looking at this, I, it sounds awesome, I mean, that's really cool, I love technology, but like, not, I I'm not looking to spend everyone's money excessively. But we do have a bigger problem that's not ref- reflecting in the budget, so I just wanted to bring that point forward.
Well, and I I I think it's actually a good avenue for us to explore because even the Sam's Club robot that's cleaning the floors, you know, and that's wicked annoying when you're in the club at night and it's beeping at you, you get out of its way and so forth. But our buildings are not occupied in the evening and so, you know, when we have one custodian in each of the three buildings on second shift currently, to have a robot that could be doing the hallways or the gymnasium or the cafeteria, you know, under supervision of somebody who's doing other stuff also, we should be considering that and taking a look, Sam's Club's doing it because it's less expensive.
Right.
Otherwise, they wouldn't be doing it, so we should probably pursue that and figure it out. And the initial cost might be a gasp, but in the long run, it may be.
Well, the initial cost might be offset by salaries that we're not filling right now.
Exactly.
Yep.
So in the long run, yeah. Yeah, and you gotta you gotta look for those nuggets that are out there, and Sam's is all about low cost, so there's a reason why they have that robot thing beeping at me.
So you may become the lord of the robots soon.
I'm okay with that, it'd be something.
What happens if there's no wifi in the at the field and this thing doesn't work?
Uh, this thing connected to twenty-seven satellites.
Yeah.
Somehow it had signal, it it was pretty impressive. They came over and did a demo and it was right.
And what do you say, it was accurate within an inch or it was like?
Less than.
Yeah, like a quarter of an inch or so, yeah.
Like, better than, I mean, no offense, Dave, you're good at it, but.
He's lines a nice and straight.
Hate to get a kid who froze a rock in the path.
Any other questions from the board on buildings and. Eric, none, budget committee questions?
Yeah, I have a question, uh, in regards to four sixty on pages nine, ten, and eleven. So I don't know if this is similar to like restraps and HVAC as far as size of buildings, why the difference in five fire extinguisher inspection, light inspection, and fire alarm inspection?
All the square footage is all.
What's what's our biggest school?
Cablehead school.
So fire ex- you would think then they have more fire extinguishers, right?
Absolutely.
It's a bigger building, well, GMS pays twelve hundred and CHS pays seven twenty.
GMS has more exit lights and emergency lights because they, we do not have sprinkler system, so therefore they made us put exit lights in every single classroom, that's two times two, because every classroom has two exits, whether it be in the hallway or we tosses off into another classroom. So the fire marshal came down on us back in two thousand eight real hard and had, we added lights, uh, probably so many, hundreds and hundreds of exit lights. The maintenance on those, the the cost of batteries.
I'm not asking maintenance, just just the inspection part, but like, I'm thinking of a fire alarm.
That's part of the inspection.
Okay, but so how about a fire alarm?
Fire alarm is should be the same.
Sure, that's what I'm thinking, there's only one fire alarm in each building, right?
Correct. Well, no, there's there's, uh, a lot more bells and whistles, that's for sure, more heat, heat devices and smoke devices than others.
So the fire alarm inspection is more than just the box?
Yes, correct, yep, now, they they literally inspect every single device. They trip every heat detector, every smoke detector.
And it's all based on square footage?
Yeah, it's all based on what's inside the building, yep.
And Dave, um, GMS is not sprinkled.
It is not sprinkled.
The other two buildings are.
Correct.
And so that also changes what you have to have for extinguishers and other things, right?
These sprinkler inspections are very expensive, there's a lot to do.
Right, and CHS, you have Brian, what?
You get two different ones, correct.
Any other budget committee questions? Back to the board, any other final questions, building and grounds? All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, Doug is gonna walk you through the business office and transportation budget.
So, um, in regards to school board and business offices, not typically any real big changes. Uh, last year, though, there was a reduction of a position at the SAU, which was half SAU, half, um, kinda school board position. And with that came the outsourcing of of note-taking, so which we knew when we reduced the budget, we left in, I think, ten thousand, um, when we reduced the budget for for ki- uh, professional services to outsource it, um, and we need to continue with note-taking for that. So you'll you'll see that that is now for the first time in the budget because the position was reduced while we were going through budgeting process last year. Business office, um, as Holly talked about before, we moved time clock plus to the HR budget and then every other year we have to uh, fund Gatsby seventy-five reporting, so last year we use, uh, two years ago, we used Jefferson Pilot. Um, and Gatsby seventy-five is the non-pension, um, expenses that could happen after retirement. So, uh, you know, it's a way for, I think, the state compiles that that as well to see what is needed, um, so. Uh, the big change in in this year's budget, as as we look at all those lines, um, is the transportation. So we are currently ending a five-year contract. Um, as as we've said a couple times at school board meetings, our price per bus this year is really good. It's really good compared to a lot of towns, especially the towns that have started a new contract this year or last year. Uh, so there's been a lot of price increases for for many fields after COVID. Uh, transportation is one of them, uh, somebody who drives a large bus is CDL certified, therefore, you know, there's shortage in in trucking across America and the the rates for people who are involved with that have increased, therefore, the the need to increase the rates for school bus drivers, which our company and other companies have done as well. So we have not signed a contract at this point, but what's in the budget is based on the proposed five-year, year one of staying with our current company. And as we know, that's about a twenty percent increase for year one for your general transportation, whether that be, you know, the the nine buses that go throughout town or the several special ed buses that either stay in town or go to outer district. For things like sports and co-curricular, that was an increase of about six point seven percent. And again, the difference, the reason why that was lower is that a lot of the the benefits for the drivers, whether that be pension or medical or dental, um, not pension, uh, it's four oh three B, I think, four oh one K, um, is is built into that regular rate. Um, and then the extra is just more of that per hour rate that that we're seeing. So I know we're, we've talked about transportation at the last couple board meetings, uh, we brought in the two different people from First Student and then we have some more, uh, final discussions on that contract on the fifteenth of this month as well. And then we had already talked about the last thing on this on this slide, which is the hundred thousand dollar transfer to food service.
All right, starting with page one. Can I ask a question about this, so it's a set five hundred dollars per month for the note-taker, is that correct, or for the person who does the minutes? What happens, like, for example, this month where we're meeting five hundred times, but in the summer, we only meet once?
So when we negotiated the contract and it's, um, it's not what we're currently paying, I think we're at four fifty, they asked for an increase to five. Uh, and so they recognized that that offset, that there were busy months like November with budget and then there's July where we meet once. And so we just set it to a steady rate that would be paid across the board, um, and the individual was comfortable that it would average out.
Okay.
And that's not on, it's the same arrangement with the town, um, and the way they approach it, so.
Sounds good.
And I'll say the minutes have been of great quality, too, very impressive.
I've, no complaint.
And timely, I mean, very timely, very critical, so.
Very timely, very timely.
Anything else on page one? Page two? Page three?
All right, the buses. I know our 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 last board meeting, we had talked about the potential, you know, to go from nine to eight. I know we talked about that last year and the board elected to not do that, and that's back on the table this year, especially given the increased rates for contracts. And throughout the idea of, is this an opportunity looking at ridership on those buses to actually move from nine to seven? So, I'm just curious, I know you were looking at like times and run rates and the can we get the kids just where they need to be on time and what's the impact of that? Do we have any data on that quite yet or not yet?
So we have, we have some data as far as, we had, uh, for for three days, the bus drivers did a count. Um, this would be AM count, PM count, both for the joint LMS, CHS run as well as the GMS run. Uh, so we had those numbers last time, we were asked to kind of follow up to see how much high school students are on a bus. It tends to be low, tends to be two to three on, say, bus four, and then ten to twelve on bus two. On average, it seems maybe around eight kids, eight high schoolers per per bus. Um, you know, looking at the the most, um, that we have on on a on a a certain bus, um, and then for all the buses, and then dividing it by nine, which we currently have, we would have thirty-six, and this is our largest number, PM students per bus, thirty-six students per bus. If we went to eight buses, we would go up to forty kids per bus. And then if we went to seven buses, we'd go to forty-six kids per bus. We get to two per seat at fifty-one kids per bus. So all of those numbers are less than two per seat, slightly less than two per seat.
I thought they fit seventy-seven.
They fit seventy-seven, um, but especially for, that's three per seat. And I, if we put three middle schoolers per seat, it's going to take a lot. Not not the direction to go. Yeah, so seventy-seven.
And it doesn't include sports equipment, trombones, backpacks?
Yeah.
When you add that up, it's.
So seventy-seven per bus and two per seats is definitely doable, so that, which is fifty, fifty-one students. Um, so if we're at forty-six and then a bus wasn't able to come, well, now we're starting to go over that two per seat. Uh, they also said, you know, that we can pretty much guarantee you, if we went from nine buses to eight buses, we wouldn't disperse out the kids on the longest bus route right now, that no, no kids would be added to that route. So we already have, you know, whatever the earliest time we pick up and the latest time we drop off, that would stay the same. There might just be more kids who get dropped off clo- picked up closer to that earliest time and dropped off closest to that latest time. They said if we went to seven buses, we would have to start earlier and you would end earlier. Um, and the, and, um, the biggest constraint on that is in the afternoon when you drop off LMS, CHS and you have to get to GMS in order to pick up. And as of right now, sometimes the buses are a little bit later, which means that the staff wait. Uh, so if we went to seven buses, we would have to kind of, it would be a multiple step process as far as looking at our start times as well to make sure that we could fall within that with an earlier, with a longer bus route. Um, so they felt quite confident that eight buses, we wouldn't see much of a difference, but seven buses, there would be. They also, our rates are contracted out at, I believe, about five hours and they they're not quite sure if they went to seven buses, if that would bump past the five hours, which would therefore have us paying an additional amount as well.
So you did confirm that the per bus rate wouldn't change between nine and eight?
The per bus rate.
If it goes more than five hours.
Well, that was, he's more concerned with seven at that point.
So the per bus rate won't change between nine and eight and it won't change between nine and seven, uh, as long as we stay within that five hours.
Right.
So, yeah.
And we can go up and down within a contract, like with the buses?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we can go up and down within, yep.
I think there's another piece to to focus on, so you you have physical size and crowding on the bus, but you also wanna think about behaviors with crowding on the bus, right? And so that's another factor that, you know, currently, uh, and, you know, the board should be reminded, I had a bus license. I drove school bus when I was principal and I actually picked kids up in the morning and I would tell my colleagues back at school, I'm like, hey, you think having twenty-four science students in front of you is tough? Put fifty-five behind you and try to navigate through traffic and watch out for deer at the same time. Like, this is a tough, tough job. And so I think we ought to be mindful of what we're doing because frankly, the more you cram into a seat, the more stuff can happen below the seat that the driver is not able to see. It's really a recipe that we wanna be cautious about going forward, our buses are safe, we have good drivers, we have a lot of driver retention because they wanna be in Litchfield, um, but there's a, there's a tipping point and we should just be mindful of where that tipping point is.
I I just wanted to second that emotion, that is, uh, as someone who, and if I, Miss Stair was sitting next to me, my loyal assistant principal, she, uh, often has those bus videos to watch and watching them now is painful and it doesn't seem like that's a lot of kids. And when we talk about numbers, it's not, but it's unsupervised kids, right? The driver is focusing on driving the road, you're talking about middle schoolers who don't always make the best choices, they're wonderful kids, but when they have no supervision and someone there to make sure they're doing the right thing, they're often doing the wrong thing. Um, and lengthening their time on the bus, putting more together in a seat, I I just think it's a recipe for disaster.
I I don't disagree with that, but I also think that taxpayers shouldn't be paying for poor parenting. So, you know, and I'll say that I don't mind saying that, right? We have behavior issues, the behavior issues have to stop. Um, and if we have to start paying more money in taxes because bus costs go up because we can't continue to utilize more of a bus, people should at least be cognizant of that.
I just wanna confirm, like, the numbers per bus, right? So I'm thinking there's probably eighteen rows on a bus, both sides, so thirty-six rows.
There are twenty-five full seats and one small seat, so.
Twenty-five.
So twelve on each side.
So twelve on each side?
Thirteen on each, thirteen on, thirteen on each side.
I feel like they're bigger than that. Okay, all right.
There's super grand buses and smaller buses, so they, when we were, when I was a kid, there were larger, longer buses, they're bringing down the size as well.
So going back to the behavior, uh, concern about behavior on buses, is, do you feel as though going to eight buses is, you feel like that's gonna trigger a problem?
That's, no.
Okay.
I think the seven is where I'd start to worry about.
Well, I mean, seven, we have the other consideration of whether or not they can do it within the same time anyways.
Right.
Yep.
And we don't have to jump to something aggressive.
No, I'm okay with a gradual phase, but I think it was interesting just to run with that and make sure we're doing our due diligence, so.
Doug, do you have the number, the total number, if we do, if we were to reduce to one, to eight buses?
Thirty-six.
Eighty thousand one thirty-two would be the reduction.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so from talking with the bus company, looking at the numbers myself, I don't think we should continue with nine buses, I think that's too many. I think eight is the way to go, I think moving down to seven, it trickles into more stress, um, as well as looking at times of.
I also think there's loading time, I mean, when you have that many students getting on the bus, you see a bus stop with six kids, they're staying there a heck of a lot longer than the bus stop with one kid. So it's not even just a matter of adding stops adds times, but adding kids at the same stop or moving things around, I think it's just gonna.
I I don't even think it's a consideration because if we go to seven and we're wrong, we've budgeted for seven and we now have a big problem. So I think there's no, I mean, we have to budget for eight and if by some chance we look at it and say, wow, we could go to seven.
Yeah.
I I I appreciate the research and asking the question, I think eight's the right move for right now.
Okay, um, any other questions on page three? And then page four. Anything else from school board? Budget committee questions?
Doug, what did you say the average?
Doc, what did you say the average was if you went from nine bus state as far as students on the bus?
So if I'm just looking at.
I know each bus will be different, but on average.
Yeah, so it went from thirty-six students to forty students if we look at the kind of largest bus, which is the PM for LMS CHS, so about four students.
Any other budget committee questions?
I do.
Yes.
Now, if, if we do go from nine to eight though, they're not gonna take one bus and spread it over eight. They're gonna take one bus and spread it over three or four because they want to make sure that they're looking at the routes and things like that.
So those buses will have what?
Those buses will have more than the average four. So they'll have maybe, I don't know, they'll have, uh, between six and nine maybe students at, yeah.
So there's possibly have nine additional pickups, nine additional drop offs. So how much more time will that be adding to a run? I mean, you can go, if you're behind that bus on Hillcrest, it's already stopping in every driveway. So, and I'm not sure what buses you'll be adding students to, but I'm just concerned as far as the length of the run. The other thing to consider also is CHS is where the numbers are going down. Elementary and the middle school where the numbers are going up. And really, the buses aren't needed, the high school, it's the elementary and the middle school. But that'd be my concern as far as going from nine to eight. I mean, if you've done all, all the homework on it, but you're adding stops, you're adding drop offs, and you're adding time to load the bus from the schools and unload the buses from the schools.
Yeah, so they, we looked into this last year, um, and then we continue to look into it this year as well. So I think, you know, when I asked them, are you, are you planning on using the same bus to split up as you were thinking of last year? They said yes. Um, and when they looked at it last year and this year, I said, and, so what does that do for time? The, the main thing they went back to is that our longest route right now, earliest pickup, latest drop off, um, that one won't be touched at all and there'll be some other buses that will get closer to that. So it will make the ridership of some students, several students, longer, but it won't be longer than some kids currently go right now.
So my other question with transportation, um, is sports. And I know the school board, when I was on the school board, we had many conversations as far as either getting vans, self-transport. And I'm not certain if the board's looked into that anymore. I'm telling you right now, more and more schools are doing that for athletics. In the middle school, they're either self-transporting or they come in little, little mini vans. And I'm seeing more and more of that. And we talked about it before, especially like something like the fishing club, the golf club. You know, rather than renting a bus, you rent the van, or you just have them drive. And I, I know the question's always been liability. Well, you gotta reach out to other school districts because a lot of them are doing it. So there must be something they sign off on. We basically all run the same insurance company. So there's gonna be something they sign off, but they just self-transport. We don't have a problem with them self-transporting when the end of the activity. So I'm not sure why there's such a problem with self-transporting at the beginning of the activity. And I'm not saying in all cases, but in some.
I know a lot of, more schools went to self-transport middle school students because they relied on the parents than self-transport high school students because of the liability of getting to the game, um, and getting home from the game in a safe way. So, uh.
Again, I'm not saying all of them, but definitely like, there are some sports I think you could self-transport and definitely look at the middle school as far as that also.
So as, as we look at transportation going up, which is a factor for the general, um, general lines as well, it's, it's a large factor for special ed as well. So we've been starting to look at, does it make sense to purchase vehicles of our own? And if so, what type of vehicles? Uh, so for, if you're at all picking up students from their home and driving them to school for, for, uh, that has its, a lot more criteria. And one of them is that you can't use a bus that's over ten passengers, ten or twelve passengers. So a lot of the schools are buying these fourteen, sixteen passenger vans type of thing. Uh, you can't use that for home to school. So like when we first start off, we want to maybe purchase something, if we decide to purchase something, that can be used in multiple ways. So it could be a van, that's just like your Toyota Sienna type of thing. We could, you know, get kids out in the community, which we pay for right now. We could drive kids to Pinkerton with that. We could drive kids to residential placement with that as well. Um, so I, I think that's a continuing conversation that we need to have as we look at the prices and where they've gone and what we are paying for, for certain transportation as well. Uh, I know some, the, the larger than twelve passenger vans are safer now, but they're not endorsed by, by federal government. They're not endorsed by Primex, our insurance company. They say stay away from those. So that's a harder thing to kind of jump into, I think, for, you know, even though other schools are doing that, I don't think our first step in should be something that both federal and, and Primex is saying, don't do. They say if you want to go to that size, then you should really be purchasing a, a smaller bus. Um, you know, because that's.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of a larger van like that. I was thinking more small scale.
Yep.
And, you know, you can even do multiple vehicles and still save money.
Yeah, so, um, Holly and I are starting to work on pricing that out because, you know, as we get to the special ed budget, you'll, you'll see that the transportation there has, has gone up as well. So I think we gotta start.
You probably Uber some of those kids less than cost of the year.
There, there could be something coming out in, in the state. So, um, where that might be a, an easier possibility with, with Uber, like Uber bus drive certified people type of thing. That would be on a list that you could, that they could decide on any given day to, to drive or not drive. So I think that the state is realizing the, the pressures of schools. Um, and it's not just that we, that the, the financial responsibility are, have increased. It's the fact that there's just less of these, there, there's only so many drivers and so many vans anyways. So if you have another kid go to residential placement, it's not like you can guarantee that you're gonna be able to find transportation for that anyways. So definitely more to come.
We were in a superintendent meeting and one of my colleagues joked that the answer is Amazon. They can get paper towels anywhere, they can get kids anywhere, so we'll see what, we'll see what unfolds.
Hang it from a drone? Um, all right, any other questions on the business budget? Hearing none, we'll move on to SAU.
Yep, so a couple of, uh, smaller budgets. So the SAU budget is up by sixteen dollars, is pretty much level.
Down by sixteen.
Sorry, it's decreased by sixteen.
Okay. Questions on the SAU budget? Hearing none from the school board, any from budget committee? Hearing none from budget committee, back to school board. No, okay, thank you.
All the school board budgets are right.
I'm sorry, is it, I'm trying to find the board budget.
Do we not have a school board budget?
Don't know if we.
Yeah, we'll get back to you on the school board budget.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing it at the moment.
All right, that brings us to curriculum then.
Yep, we'll skip down to Mary, uh, Woodman is our director of CIA.
All right, fantastic. Uh, so the, oh, there is an overall increase in curriculum based on the approved budget of last year to this year, and it's seven thousand three hundred and one dollars. Uh, there are two main drivers behind that. The first is the course reimbursement to reflect the LSSA contract, um, which does increase that line by three thousand four hundred and forty-six. And the other increase is I did add some more money back into the, uh, professional development line that we had taken a lot out of last year because with the shift in, um, science teachers specifically, um, we are going to need to do more, uh, AP and project lead the way training in the next couple of years. Um, we've been able to get through this year by, um, just piecemealing a lot of things together. But, um, we do see that with, especially after, um, what we saw in science this year, we are going to need to do some more training for those teachers in order to continue some of our courses. Uh, so, pretty much everything else is level funded with the exception of software, which is down three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, and I did just want to make a note, uh, you'll see the, when you look at the budget last year to this year, there was the encumbrance of the additional, um, reading contract for A to five. So it does look like I came in way under budget, thank you. Um, but this year it does include a math contract, but I was able to get the math contract for three years at the, roughly the same price that we had the one-year quote last year of the, um, reading contract. And that math contract is K to twelve. So. That's about it.
All right, questions? Page one, or page two? I guess it's a short enough budget that we can just do it all.
Huge.
Hearing no questions from the board, budget committee questions?
Yeah, Mary, um, on the new math program, it says updated resources. That doesn't include textbooks?
Uh, it includes the online textbooks. Um, it will include a class set because from six through twelve, the version we've been using is being sunsetted. Same program, they've, we found a lot of success. The teachers have a lot of success with that program. So, um, currently we have the updated version in their hands to explore this year. And then, um, it would be one class set of hard copies because we do want to make sure that we have them there for kids that need them. And then everything else would be digital.
Look for the most, if they're accessing it on a Chromebook.
Six through twelve, uh, K through fi- K through four, or I guess five through twelve, K through four, we still do have, um, everything done with hard copy books.
Any other budget committee questions? Any last school board questions? Hearing none, it does look like if we're talking about the school board, that budget was part of the business budget.
That's correct. It's right at the beginning, it's sort of blended in with the business budget. So if you go back to business, uh, school board is page one and page two, about halfway on page two. And then you'll see it switches over to business finance office.
Since we already went through the budget page by page, but I did want to offer the opportunity for questions? Budget committee questions? Hearing none, thank you so much. Slide into technology, right?
So, uh, so this guy is our director of information technology, Chris Camrock. And you had a little glimpse into, uh, his request last time, which is, I think, that person link up there for the IT technician. So if you want to just start with that question, we'll go.
Yeah, we can go over that again. Yeah, so that's, that was the peer cohort, um, that we use for basically everything. And it really does showcase that people actually touching hardware that were behind everybody else's hardware. Um, the amount of devices and hardware that we have, it says it's eighteen hundred devices I have on the left-hand side. It's definitely more than that, but it's just like a rough ballpark. Every person has a Chromebook, every teacher has a laptop, new line panels, some projectors, um, labs. All these things add up very quickly. Um, having an extra set of hands to take care of these things and helping out, like we have a new lap- that we need to replace and that's just gonna take time. Like, they all need to be imaged, they need to be put in place, like, it's just time that I am helping my tech now. But if I had two to go out and do that, I can start working on networking on my side, some of the security updates that I need to be doing, um, to be technically, you know, with the law at this point. Um, so that, that's just something that would help me do more of what I need to be doing and less fixing Chromebooks, fixing laptops and, and doing those kinds of things, so. That's a big part for that. Uh, I can go back to the slide. Uh, my budget didn't, uh, change too much. Again, we're doing Chromebooks for fifth and ninth grade. That's what we do every year, that's a refresh cycle, and then we trickle them down into the, uh, GMS as needed. Um, the biggest increase you'll see is for my firewall license. So we can do a yearly license, I put that price in, that's almost sixteen thousand dollars. If I do the three-year upfront, which is what I did, uh, when I first got here, it comes out to about thirteen thousand a year. So it's a little bit of savings there. I did put the three-year in because, well, it was cheaper in the long run. Um, I want to keep up with teacher laptop replacements. At this point, I think I have four left from the ones I purchased, so we're just running through those. Um, they've just been neglected, they just need updates, uh, and they've loved it. Uh, LMS lab replacement is on there, that's another one that I'm looking to get upgraded. We have little desktops right now, they don't even have fans, it's, they, they need a little love. So we're looking into that as well. Um, interactive panels, we're keeping with the new lines. At this point, uh, LMS except for I think one room, has a, two rooms, has a new line panel. Uh, GMS is almost done, we have a couple of rooms that we're working through. And then CHS has a few already and that's where I'd be putting the next, uh, fourteen or so. Um, and then updating the infrastructure is updating my switches, adding new hardware to my, um, servers, upgrading servers. Um, the things in the background that I need to be doing, upgrading, you know, Wi-Fi access points and stuff like that. So as you can see, my budget's pretty level compared to other years and the, except for the big jump for the firewall cost, for the, the license of the firewall, that is.
Are the new lines replacing the smart boards and projectors?
Yep, yep, so we're taking down projectors and smart boards as we go and putting the new lines in place.
With respect to the need for an IT technician or the request for an IT technician, um, do you have any sense for how much learning time or teaching time is being interrupted in, in sort of like how long of delays that's actually, that's, that's a real, I'm throwing a real, I'm throwing a real curve ball at you.
It's hard because it really depends on what it is, right?
Sure.
So internet's down, then that's a.
I didn't know if there was a clear correlation to, look, we're having stuff go down and it's interrupting learning for, you know.
There's definitely moments, you know, I've had teachers where there's something wrong with their laptop and I'm not able to get to it. My tech's doing something else and that interrupts their flow for the day. And now they have to ship something completely different, having more feet on the ground, we can get those quick ones. So it's, it definitely would help, I don't know what that must look like, but absolutely.
Figured it out.
Chris, can I help you on that one too? Because it would also impact, at the middle school, I know a lot of times we have students who accidentally damage their Chromebooks. Um, and we find that there is some challenges with, we don't, we don't have loaners anymore um, because we're finding that we're just taking loaners and damaging loaners. So they have their device that they purchased the insurance, they can utilize it, but that takes time. So they turn in their computer, it happened, we have to wait for somebody from IT to come over, pick up those computers, take them over, fix them, return them through the insurance process and get them back.
And so what's, in the time that those are gone, what, what's happening, or what are the students doing?
Students are getting alternative assignments, paper assignments, as opposed to the digital assignments that are tied into what the rest of the class is utilizing at that given time.
Okay.
So it does, it does, it's a di- it's a difference. And it's a struggle for teachers as well as the students. Because they're happy to provide that assignment in that case.
And can I just ask, when we're talking about accidental damage, are we talking by and large about accidental damage? Or are we talking about?
Intentional?
Procation fingers.
A broken screen is probably the most common.
Okay.
So.
So, so, they're not throwing, they're not throwing them up in the air.
My fifth grader just said that his Chromebook is broken, so.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what, what happens often is the kids will take the Chromebook, put it in their backpack and then forget and throw it to the bus.
Okay, so, so. Accident, it's not malicious damage.
There, there are things that are malicious damage, but.
We, we can clearly tell when it's malicious or not, um, but again, we've had probably seventy work requests, you know, almost a hundred just.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine putting something in the backpack, like that, that's, I consider that accidental.
Yeah, the, the reasoning's always funny, like I just took it out and it was like this. It's not just like that, like something happened, all right, yeah, we, we get it.
Like when they're prying off keys, that's different.
Yeah, that's different, yeah, picking up things, you can clearly tell when it's accidental or like.
Okay.
One of the things I see for the incoming fifth grade class is eighty-nine Chromebooks at three hundred dollars. And then for the incoming freshman, for ninety. and then for the incoming freshmen, for ninety-nine Chromebooks?
Yep.
I'm looking at enrollment.
I think I did an extra five on each of those lines.
I was gonna say, it seems to be an extra five or ten, depending on which line you're looking at. Do those that aren't used then go into circulation as spares?
They'll be used. Last year, I had to use the insurance money actually to purchase another, I think it was close to forty more. So they will be used, you know, if it's broken beyond repair, then we have to replace it, like, we cannot. So they definitely, definitely will be used. The good ones that we get from eighth grade and the ones from the seniors, those will get trickled down and used for parts or GMS or whatever we do with that. So they're all being used.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board on page one?
I do, actually. Seven thirty-four, equipment additional, there's a line for sixth grade cases for each Chromebook?
Yes.
So if, if, you know, Chromebooks are being damaged, why aren't we buying projected cases for all of the Chromebooks?
So LMS is our biggest offender when it comes to damages, we know that. And this is going to be like a trickle effect, instead of an upfront sixth, seventh, and eighth, they all have different models too.
Okay.
So since I got here, I've been using the same model. So we'll be able to get a sleeve that will fit the sixth grade ones, which are the current fifth grade ones.
Yeah.
And then moving forward, we'll just keep adding that on.
Okay.
Moving forward, next year, sixth and seventh, we'll technically have it, but we'll buy for sixth. And then sixth, seventh, and eighth next year.
And also, that will be, it's a systematic change because the fifth graders this year aren't taking their Chromebooks home. So when they're trained this year, they're taking them home next year, they'll have a case to take them home.
See, I bought a sleeve for my kid.
Thank you.
Does he use it?
Well, all right.
Anything else, page one? Page two? Page three?
Back on the, on line seven thirty-eight, all the way down the bottom of page three?
Yep.
So on the LMS lab replacement, and it has twenty-five at nine hundred, in our current budget, we funded thirty for this year. So why are we funding an additional twenty-five?
So last year was for CHS, a CHS lab replacement.
It wasn't LMS?
No, this one's LMS.
Okay.
So I did CHS this year.
Okay.
Well, it's still in the works.
Is that the same for staff laptop replacements? Was that also CHS?
Um, so that's just kind of as needed at this point. I haven't been doing a particular school, it's kind of, someone comes up to me and I look at them, like, holy cow, I can't believe you're using this, let's get your replacement. And most teachers say yes, every once in a while, they're a little hesitant, but, so that one's just kind of as needed, not, not a specific school.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's.
That's why I have it under district.
Right, okay. So that's twenty-five, but across the district, not?
Yep, yep.
Oh, my specific. In terms of just this lab replacement, just so I'm really clear, if all the teachers have district-issued computers, right? Why, what's the value of these labs? Or what's, if the students have Chromebooks, if the teachers have computers, why, why do we also need to fund labs?
There's different softwares that they're using and different programs in the labs that require usually more robust devices. That's really what comes out too. Like at, I know more about the high schools, because that's usually where I am. They have, you know, like a graphic design that can't be done on a Chromebook, that won't be done on like a basic laptop. I need something that's got a little more.
So how are students able to do that at home for formative?
It depends on what it is.
Do you plan to use the full seven seventy-three because it's not legally required in no one?
I have to, exactly.
You have to, right? You're obligated by the law to put that into the book, so that's, that's an important distinction also. It's not, hey, you might need it, it's, you have to allocate for this.
And what would the alternative be with the, with the underspend? As opposed to being returned to the taxpayers, and what is the alternative for that?
It gets washed, it gets wiped into the general fund at the end of the year, and the board can use it for encumbrances or whatever we want to do with it.
Okay, so I understand, okay.
The work can be returned to the taxpayer, right? I mean, you can make those decisions.
Right, and I think if we're, if we're asking the taxpayer to appropriately fund this, it should be done with the promise that if you're budgeting accordingly, that if there's extra money, then it should come back to the taxpayer.
Out of this pool of money, right?
Out of this pool of money.
Right.
And we should do that whether or not the budget, we have an agreement with the budget committee or not.
I, I agree.
Sure.
Right. So at the end of this year in June, right? If you're still in the board, I don't know, but at the end, we may have scared you off by then. Right, but we will have this conversation when we talk about encumbrances specifically, about what's the, what's the dollar amount coming specifically out of special education for this current fiscal year?
Are you asking questions?
I'm just, I'm just making comments.
He's making sure you're, he's giving you a mental note for June.
Yes, that's going to be his question.
And I, I agree with everything that everyone's saying, like, if we, for, for this year, if we don't use all of it, I would like to see it go back to taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Only thing that could stop that, for instance, and I'll, and, you know, I don't want to be like a middle school kid who gives you, well, what if this, what if this happened type thing? But let's say like, a lot of things broke at, at our schools and we had to fix it, and we went through our, our trust fund as well, and we still had to pay the money, then I don't have a choice but to try to get us to zero at the end of the year. Now, do I think that's going to happen? No. So do I think like if we underspend it this year by fifty thousand, that, that we should consider that fifty thousand untouchable?
Yes.
But I think it's incumbent on us to be appropriately funding other parts of the budget to account for those things. Because I think that what we find with the taxpayer is that they really are not happy when that happens. When, when, when we budget for this, and then we say, well, good, great, we had extra money, and we'll use it for something else, right?
Like cold cash.
Right, now, now that's problematic because people don't want to vote to fund those things either, right? So we have that historically as a problem with maintaining our schools. But I do think it's worth noting that I would rather be discussing appropriately in other aspect, in other parts of the budget, where we should be putting that money, so that that way we're not taking it from an overspend or an underspend in this. Right?
To just circle back to what Doug just said, it's the same thing all the VAs I've heard say. It's, you know, the agreement's the agreement, we'd like to honor the agreement, but if there are road bridges, you, you, you have to pay for that stuff, and so there's always that hedge. I just want to point out that hedge.
Right, but right now, we're talking about budgeting.
He's got to watch the bottom line.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah.
But we're talking about budgeting, and I, I, I am just encouraging that we talk about the things that you're trying to hedge against in the appropriate places of the budget, so that that way we can at least highlight the fact that if we're not, if we're going to under-budget here, that could also be a problem.
Can you make this out of, take it out of front ten and put it in its own account so that it then can't be, any of which can't be pushed back into the regular budget? Like one of the trust funds?
No.
Well, that's the other thing too. Thanks for bringing that up, so if.
Thanks a lot.
I think that was sarcasm.
I don't know.
I think you're just not going to like the answer.
So usually, the Warren articles come in and they say, you know, if there's fund balance, you know, we'll move up to a hundred and fifty thousand into this. Well, that would come from, you know, if we underspend in our district tuition, then that's fund balance as well. So the taxpayers could say, if they say, I wanted to go to this trust fund, well, it's going to go there first and then go back to the taxpayers. Because the taxpayers have already voted on it. But at least they know where it's going. At least they've had a chance to kind of vote on where it's going as well.
So, so the.
So we can, we can look to see, the problem comes that we have to make the Warren articles in December, January, but we don't know our balance of that. Like, last year, we switched it up. We, we said, instead of like a hundred and fifty thousand, we'll go, we'll use the percentage up to type of thing. So you can also start with like protecting the first eighty thousand, but we don't know what to protect in December, June. So we can't say after the first eighty thousand of fund balance, this percent, this percent will go towards this trust fund type of thing. So the timing of, of when we have to create the Warren articles doesn't allow us to do that.
So the practical application of this is that it's actually not up to us to make the final decision on that. To, on, on the money that comes back.
It's up to the board to make the decision on what to do with it if there's money left over.
So any Warren articles is approved by the town. So it is up to the, the board whether we transfer money out throughout the year too. I mean, granted, it's authorized at five thousand and above, but I'm not going to be transferring money out of that without board permission anyways. Just because I want this to work for the town. Like, at the end of the day, we're, there's, there's a ton of taxpayers' money in this as, as well. And there's a history to this. So I want to respect what I can, knowing that that's the best way forward.
Sure.
So yes, a lot of history with this one.
Yep.
So I'm going to jump in for a second because Peter's question about pulling this out and putting some other fund, you know, this is a portion of our budget. It's, it's really interesting that we have this conversation about the twelve hundreds, which is a, you know, it's a bigger portion, but it's, you know, we're not having this conversation about athletics, we're not having this conversation about IT or other things. It's just an interesting, I don't know where this started, I don't know how, the history of this, and it's a long history, but I don't know the origin of it and why meeting the needs of our media students became such a conversation point each year.
Honestly, I think it's because there are parts of it that cannot be discussed and should not be discussed for confidentiality purposes. But for athletics and for those other things, we can have a full, clear, transparent conversation. For this thing, we're saying, trust us, this is what we need, we know what we need, and we need you to do this, and the trust factor is not there.
Well, and it's coming, and it's coming in under.
And hasn't been there for a long time.
Historically, it's always been coming in under.
And it's, it's the largest, it's one of the largest.
It's a significant budget.
Right, it's one of the largest items, and it's coming in, so people want to know, I guess. I don't think it's, I don't think it's about, I, I don't, and I don't think you're insinuating this, but I don't think it's about picking on the neediest students or funding the neediest students.
I don't think this board, any of us have said we don't want to provide the services for the students who need it at all.
No, not at all.
It's, it's, what's the right number for?
That's, so I, I do wonder though, going back to the trust factor, when the town was growing exponentially?
Yeah.
You know, and so, because all it takes is, you know, one family with two kids, and you blow this up, right? And so when the town was going through that substantial increase, was that not a little bit more subjective on the part of the special ed director saying, I got to have a buffer in here because people are moving in, they, you know, the houses across the street didn't exist last week, they're there now. So maybe that's part of the history on this, I'm speculating, but clearly, this has been a long standing.
It is. But hopefully, you know, again, I think the board committed last year. I think the intent, we'll talk about it certainly, probably tomorrow night, but we can have that conversation. Anything else on one, page one?
We're on page one.
Yeah.
We just spent an hour on that one, so.
Yeah, page one, all right, moving to page two. Page three.
On page three, line seven thirty-four, kind of in the middle, I noted two-room AC units for one student one anticipated. Also balancing that against what was in our current budget, where we budgeted fourteen hundred dollars for the same AC units. Are these new? Do they transfer? Do we really need new ones?
It was for, so I want to say there was one unit that blew up, and we had to replace it this year. And there is, I believe, an additional student, and I can fact-check this for you.
Okay.
And get back to you about that.
I just want to make sure if we've already funded it, does it need to be, is it a mistake? Should it be, did it carry over just from year to year, and we need to look at it again?
I can back check it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, page three? Page four?
On the sound systems, line seven thirty-four, really same comment, is it?
Yep, so I looked into that because I heard your comment the other day about that. So actually, that can be removed. The sound systems, I went back, I checked with the teacher, I checked in the students' IEP specifically, that can be removed.
The whole amount?
The eighty, eight four, oh eight forty, and they removed.
And the replacement FM system to the line just below it?
So those are the FM systems for our hearing impaired. So those are specific to students' hearing aids. So you have to budget for them to either be sent away if they're not under warranty or to be replaced. I believe this year.
We had two thousand in the budget this year, so I'm just, like, is it again, is it a new ask? Is it a replacement to, like, or is it just a carryover from year to year?
I believe the carryover from year to year because students like to flush them down the toilet. Popular thing to do with them, so it's a.
Sounds fun.
They get frustrated with them and they flush them, and then we have to replace them.
The town has to replace them.
Town has to replace them.
Okay.
Anything else, four, five?
On the, and this is a very random thing to pick up on, but under, on the very top line for row five, it says laser printer cartridges. This was eleven forty current year, and it's gone up to twenty-seven hundred. It just seemed like a pretty significant increase for that one row.
I asked them to give me what they thought they needed. That's what they gave, that's what the teachers gave me for what they thought they needed.
More than double that line?
cartridge prices have gone up, like a lot, I've never seen that, but.
That's like a hundred and fifty percent, though.
Well, I was like, how much? I just noticed like, there's definitely been a large increase.
Well, and there's more IEPs and five oh fours that are happening.
Sophia, have you added printers in that department?
I haven't added any printers. The one printer I, I did attempt to add, we had one blow up, and I just moved it over.
Just tried to.
Hell, that thing's blowing up, huh?
Right.
It's going to say the same thing. Usually blowing up a lot, I'm really hoping they're not actually blowing up.
Blowing up.
I asked Chris to look into it, I said, please try and fix this. Is it a firmware problem? Is it a software problem? What are you going to do? Is it plugged into the right plug? What's going on?
Gotcha.
Tried very hard to salvage the printer.
Anything else on page five?
Oh, yeah. What's teacher-paid teachers? I thought that was an odd description.
It's a resource.
It's a resource.
It's a resource, okay.
It's a resource for materials. When you're trying to differentiate, present something in a different format, or provide additional resources for, let's say worksheets, that kind of thing, that's a resource to go to, to be able to get those additional. We're actually looking at trying to create, I'm going to say like a district-wide resource of a Google Drive. We have to, when you purchase it, you have to purchase it to a person. We've looked into getting a district license, it was way more expensive than just doing it to a person. But trying to then encourage the person of, when you download it, can you download it and then throw it in this drive so that there's access to it? I know I, one of the teachers that did leave, I got access to her drive and literally shared it with everybody I could think of so that we wouldn't be buying resources multiple times just because it's married to one person's identity.
Okay, it's like Etsy for teachers, right?
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
But I've, I've found curriculum there. So when I went on, I needed a standards-based curriculum for executive function, including the entire packets that went with it. And I was able to get one and utilize it this year for two students.
They're all created by educators for their own personal use, and they can sell them or offer them for free sometimes.
Under seven thirty-four, with desk foot covers, wireless mice, and large product rulers, I noted this exact same dollars in the current budget, again, same comment, is it, is it all needed again for next year?
So, and large products and rulers, those are for our visually impaired students. There are still a couple at the high school level. I know that for one student, we were able to reuse like a keyboard because the keyboard is, the keys themselves.
If it's a need, that's fine, I just want to make sure it's not, it's not a carryover, just mistake.
It's not, not carryover, just mistake.
Okay.
Sometimes the mice break, I would say that's probably the biggest carryover, is that the mice break.
Well, they, you know, they fall, so, I get it. The replacement FN, FM systems, again, same thing.
Again, hearing.
Completely funded for, and carryover, okay. The interpreter, does this play into the ELA conversations?
Yeah, so the interpreter, so we're, we're required to have.
ELL.
Our multi.
All right, well, I'm sorry.
So this is an interesting line. We are required to provide interpreters for IEP meetings or even parent-teacher conferences. One of the things that I was able to do this year, and I mentioned this in one of those school board meetings earlier, is pivot to an organization called Global Interpreting Services, which is a K-as-you-go service. I was able to get identities for, I believe, each of the principals and each of the assistant principals as well as myself and the ELL provider, ELL teacher. And what it is, is you dial into a company, you get an interpreter almost instantaneously. You get an interpreter almost instantaneously for even some of the really strange languages. This would encompass that service, but also if we needed to have an in-person. So for any reason, we needed to call the language bank and we needed to have them show up. And trying to pivot to that online version because it is significantly cheaper. But this is the first year that the school district is trying, is is trying it. So that three thousand dollars at the moment would encompass both.
How do you deal with confidentiality on that?
They're bound by confidentiality, they're bound by their.
So there's some sort of part of the contract?
Yeah.
By the contract.
Same thing for legal.
So is there a need, uh uh other than redundancy, just to make sure that this call-in system works the way you need it to? Is there a, are there certain times where you need someone in person, like scenario-wise, like you?
Yeah. Yep, so at a recent IEP meeting, so you can have a, before we had the Global Interpreting Services there. For any, so I think the the easiest example I can come up with is um as we have families move in. Sometimes there is partnerships there. One parent has um all the legal, they don't speak English, like all the legal rights, they don't speak English. So in those instances, um even at the high school level, it may be easier to have somebody there to have a conversation with when you're talking about credits and.
It's something, I can tell you from previous experience in the district, um I'm bilingual in Spanish. I sat in on some of our meetings before because we had exhausted the funding for um our translation services. And we had families come in that just that the custodial parent did not speak English in such a way that we felt comfortable having, not having somebody in the room that could act in that, so.
So we won't be able to move away from the in-person?
Not potentially. So if I have to have somebody, like if if Chris didn't speak any English and I had an interpreter there and I go, I need you to read this WPM. I get it, we didn't, you know, do a, we're not gonna read you the whole IEP, we're gonna read you the highlights of the IEP, but I need you to read this to make sure they understand. That's where that comes in. If I were to do the video for that same exact thing, we're paying way more money.
Than the in-person?
Than the in-person, yes.
Gotcha. But so just to clarify now, cause you said that we're trying to move away from that. Is that, is that paid on a per, like, instance basis? Or are you paying like a year?
Yeah, per instance basis. So when.
For the in-person?
Uh for in-person, we book and we have somebody come.
But that's paid on a per, we're not paying like a, we don't pay like a yearly, okay.
Per person basis. Nope, just when we.
So you can offset some of this by going to the phone thing?
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
Correct.
Thank you.
I've used the Global Interpreting Services personally when I've had IEP meetings. So the district is allowed to have somebody there for their own, um I'm gonna say catch-all safety legally, um so that even if a parent declines having somebody there, the school district can have somebody there. Doing it over the phone is the cheapest way to do that for everybody.
Sure.
Anything else on five? Six?
Line six fifty, software, the three new softwares listed?
So there is a little bit of a change there. So um Mango Languages is an estimation I got cost today. It's actually fifteen hundred dollars for twenty student profiles. Mango Languages is like Duolingo or um Rosetta Stone, that it helps to move our students along at a much faster rate. So that would be the Mango Languages piece. It also lets you provide the homework to a student, so you can actually assign work to them to be doing at home. The goal of that would be to move um multilingual students as fast as we can forward with the acquisition of language. Systran Document Translation, I believe that can, I believe, I believe I looked at this again and we can reduce it by four. So instead of a hundred and five eighty-eight by eight, it can be a hundred and five eighty-eight by four. Would be the three principals and the ELL provider. So Systran Document Translation um can be, is a closed-circuit translation system. It is, if you have parents on their home language survey opt into having their notifications sent to them in their home language, we are required to. So Systran is the closed-loop system to be able to drop a PDF into it and have it translated. And that's a hundred and eight five eighty-eights per year. So that's not um an individual program. The other thing about Systran is I have used it to translate IEPs and written prior notices. So I can actually take a written prior notice, take the verbiage that I put in it, drop it in, and translate each paragraph and bring it back. I had a, actually a court interpreter pick it up and look at it and she went, this is beautiful and it's exact. So I'm very trustworthy in the system. Um if you were to have an IEP translated, you're looking at five to seven grand. So I tend to err on the side of if we can do it reliably in some other way, that costs us maybe a little more time and man-hours, it's worth it to.
Is that, i- i- is that the purpose of that specific program? Is, is it geared towards educational translation or is this like a?
Is that geared towards educational translation specifically, but we can use it for such.
So is there any sort of uh like protection built into that? I mean, I I understand you're saying that it is accurate.
Yeah, it's closed, they don't sell the information.
But no, but I'm more so concerned about like accuracy, right? Like you said it was very accurate based off an interpreter, but is there any, like, do they give any, is there any sort of? Do we, if it's not accurate, we have a liability issue, right?
Yes.
And so is there any sort of like?
Do they give us any protection if it's?
That's why, that's why I was curious if this was like, is this something that's geared towards education where they've said like, we understand the liability that you face if you have a misinterpretation that's caused by our?
If that's of my knowledge, I would say no.
Cause there, you can do, I've done free translations, there's a whole bunch of them, you can do it and put the document in and it will then have some.
But you've got, but they're open, correct. They're open systems. So Google Translate is an open system.
Correct.
Which means you could put in the word hello and have it translated to a different language and you're hoping you're saying hello. I could go in and say, ah, ah, we're gonna change that to some beautiful cultural language. So.
Oh yeah.
You can't use open systems. Systran is a closed system. So it's run by the company. It's not open to the public to change the meanings of words.
I was actually going in the other direction. Uh Pe- Peter's going one way, I'm going the other way. My my way was more so, I just wanna make sure. I don't wanna spend five or seven thousand dollars per IEP, obviously, but I just was curious about potential, you know, if that was not accurate.
So what, yeah, so what I have done, um when I do something like that, is I take the English paragraph and then below it, I'm just gonna pick a language, the Spanish paragraph, the English paragraph, the Spanish paragraph, because I can't read Spanish. So if I change the whole thing to Spanish, I'm never gonna know what it reads. But I'd be in my written prior notice, it would be the English and below it would be the exact Spanish. Um with the same bullet points and numbers and everything like that, so that I know what it says. That way, if there's a question, it's, this is the English, this is what it needs.
I think that's a good practice.
And elevation?
Um elevation, so elevation is a platform program. Hold on, I'll bring it, I'll bring it here because I was doing some um research on it today. It's a platform program that interfaces with our um that interfaces with our English language or our our ELL teacher. Because we are required to provide report cards, we're required to provide progress. Um elevation is a program where, and I don't have an exact amount for this cause I can't get anybody to answer me from the program. But it's a digital platform that saves time in being able to prescribe what a student needs in order to move forward with their learning. It also will produce a report card, but it will also bring in the data and help filter the data as far as the language acquisition of a student. So we have looked into try to do something with Power School. It's not like this easy class interface of of how to do it. Like we would literally have to create it, which is a lot of man-hours. Where this would get us up and running with that interface much faster.
Okay, and the cost is still being determined?
Still being determined. I'm trying to get a hold of somebody. But the website, if you go to elevationeducation.com, you can certainly find out more about it.
Page six? Page seven? Page eight?
On a roll now.
Page nine?
Yep.
There it is!
Yep.
Uh on three thirty, professional services, help me understand the increase in PT services, please.
Uh it was an addition, addition of students, PT services plus the five percent cost.
Wow.
She's actually far more cost-effective than um contracting this, like with another company. She enjoys working for Litchfield, so I check with her every single year, are you coming back next year? Are you coming back next year? So we receive a significant cost savings.
She's awesome.
Using, using Sandra Gaffey.
I would also say more than only pay tape, cause she makes herself available for meetings and stuff. Like she's very flexible in providing the services and meeting the team, meeting requirements.
Yeah, awesome. It's just a, and that's fantastic. It's just a big increase, right? So it's, I have to ask the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else on page nine? Page ten?
Yes. Transportation.
Yeah.
Um so it's really the same conversation we had on page one.
It's directly linked to um the tuition of students. So that's where I said I'm I'm trying really hard to find some savings there by partnering with other school districts to find out who's providing transportation. For example, I was able to reach out to Londonderry. They have a student going to the same school as one of ours. So I had, hey, can we partner? She was, again, it's a process, it's taking forever, but she had to go to the bus company, what's the easiest way to um share the cost? But there's also a situation of I have to give our bus company first right of refusal to that. So I was able to talk to our bus company ahead of time um and and pursuing anything like that.
So same conversation, right? Um and we can do this in non-public, but the breakouts per location and where each route is going to would be helpful.
Anything else on page ten?
I think just my final comment on transportation again, and it's the same conversation that we had on slide one, right? This is an area, just like tuition, transportation's always over-budgeted. And for the last three and four years, our average was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. And now it's going up to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, right? I understand it's because of new, new students and new needs.
But there was also the significant twenty percent increase.
But even with twenty percent increase, right, if I take our average of three hundred and fifty thousand and add twenty percent, we're still at four hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Far, far cry from seven seventy-five.
So again, it's based off of actual cases that were.
But the average is actual as well, right? So yes, we're we're budgeting more because I think there's new students and new needs and I appreciate that. But again, it's just, it's the same conversation, like I said, right? It's that, we we talk about this every year. We understand it's it's um, it's always student-driven.
Oh, and the question is, is there a better way to budget?
But the reality is it's never spent.
Right, is there a better way to be budgeting for this, for over every year, but?
Yeah. That's right.
So one of the, one of the lines that's one of those iffy lines is the Homeless McKinney-Vento Act. So that's one of those where.
Yeah, that's up five thousand.
If, right, if they move in, we're we're required to partner with. So a student is not, a student, for McKinney-Vento, that's the homeless act, where we try to maintain them within their same school district from where they came from. So a school district will call, you have a student that moved in, are we sharing cost of transportation? Yep, yes, that's what you do. So last year, there was, we used everything I had and dipped into.
We used. We ended up putting, we always have overflow um supplemental homeless transportation services in Title I. We can build that in. We actually are required to build that in. But they can't be more than, they have to supplement the school. They can't just be in there. And so we ended up putting an additional, typically there's a two thousand dollars in there to start the year and we ended up putting an additional, I wanna say five thousand in there last year to be able to meet the needs of all of our uh homeless students or kids.
So it's, we reduce that, it is an unknown. And we do have some grant funding.
That, that line is not the driver in this budget, so I'm not, I'm not worried about that one.
No, it's not, it's not the driver, like you asked her, you asked her, you know.
But, but to point out, the the budget to act, it was a twenty-three budget.
Yep, yep.
Uh we were spending like forty thousand. That's the most recent number. It was underfunded by forty thousand.
Yeah.
Over forty thousand.
Do you anticipate, so, you know, we don't, we don't talk about revenues when we talk about the budget generally. Those are, you know, those come later in the conversation. Do you anticipate increased revenue with these increases needs to go along with, you know, to help supplement so that the entire burden isn't necessarily?
So a way to find the, a way to find some revenue into the budget is through the Medicaid to schools um program. There has, every so many years, you have to come up for renewal. In order to renew that, and Mike, help me on this one. In order to renew that, you have to provide your personal identifiable social security number to the state. Hope they don't have a data leak in some way because you are treated as a medical entity because you are receiving medical funding. So it would be like the CEO of Dartmouth Hitchcock has to provide their social security number because that's who's the financial responsibility. So there is a line in here, let me go back. There is a line in here for me to be, for, uh if you go to page two, it says admin fees for Medicaid and billing services at fourteen thousand dollars. Apparently, we are not going into Medicaid. So there would be no, no funds coming in. So that line could be removed in its entirety, but that means we're, even the possibility of that program, of that happening. Because you have to pay, like, although they give us the check for refunds or for the, like, the money that comes in, we have to pay in the, pay in the immediate um for the service now.
So did, sorry, did I hear that right? That we're paying this, but we're not getting any benefit from it?
No, no, we're not, we're not, we're not paying anything out of it right now. We're not paying for anything. Right now, it's a, it's a zero. We're not paying for anything, we're not getting anything.
Okay, but we're budgeting for it?
We budgeted for it because in hopes to be able to bring the service on board. Somebody has to supply their social security number to the Department of Health and Human Services.
So we've been funding this for years.
Well, Andrew's gonna do that.
And then, and then we can utilize the service. So the service is through um MSB and they have a whole X-logs where we put in all the information. It was, it was stopped in twenty twenty due to COVID because of the increase of the stress of applying the Medicaid service, of of applying the the extra time to do it. And it was alleviated, I believe, for the following year. Last year was, how many years am I? Twenty twenty-two. So I started in July of twenty twenty-two. So the year after that, again, it was coming out of COVID, so they still weren't doing it. Last year, I was gonna start doing it, however, we're not certified through the state because we don't have anybody who will provide their social security number to the Department of Health and Human Services.
Do we know are a lot of other districts doing, you know, doing this?
Um so the thing about ra- revenue coming in through Medicaid services is it's Medicaid-eligible students only. So it's not everybody in special education. It's only those students who are Medicaid-eligible. So if Chris is Medicaid-eligible and, I don't know, Mary, Mary is not, I'm getting tired, and Mary is not, we could realize for Chris, but not for Mary. Now, what we're gonna be billed back, what we're gonna get back for money is Chris is getting speech services to the two hundred and fifty, fifty dollars a service, ah, Medicaid's gonna go, eh, ten, here you go, here's ten bucks. And so they give us money back. It is money back to us.
Right, but what I'm just trying to figure out is like, I, it's, and it sounds like it's incredibly hard to predict, but
Very hard.
what would that come in, you know, if we're paying fourteen thousand in admin fees, like, are we anywhere close?
I think we, I think the last time we realized money for it was like tw- twenty thousand dollars. I think we, I think the last time we realized money for it was like tw- twenty thousand dollars.
And we paid fourteen?
No, we pay a percentage, so I think they've budgeted that we, we pay fourteen, so, um, percentage.
From money.
We always get more than we pay.
So to Andrew's point, we've been budgeting this for years and we haven't been using it, using it?
Sounds like it.
So for the, for the few, I can only speak to last year's budget. The idea was with this year to bring on MSB. I had several meetings, tried to get it pulled together. But the hangup is providing a social security number as the financial head of the school district to be able to get the money back.
So we won't have spent that money?
Sounds like actually it's Doug, not.
Especially me.
It's actually Mike.
And I won't provide.
I don't blame you.
Thank you.
I wouldn't either.
So you could take that fourteen thousand dollars.
They got my social security number?
And just, you know, I've done all the research on it, um, you know, it, they claim they need that to ensure that I'm not on this list of people who have committed Medicaid fraud. And I said, I can Google the list, there's one jetty on it, it's a chiropractor in California who's not related to me, and his first name isn't Mike. So you don't need my social security number to show that I'm not him. And he'd still say, well, we have to do it.
Does the district have a tax ID number that?
I tried that too, and they will not accept it.
Sounds like they just don't wanna give this money out.
They need the social security number of the chief operating officer, and, and then I said, but is anybody else willing to step up? And the answer is, nobody here is willing to step up with the state of New Hampshire.
I also remember a conversation saying that it, it takes an inordinate amount of time to go through the process and.
Correct, and there's, it's, so it's not just the, the time of the parent educators submitting for their services. But it's also the time, there's an oversight piece to it. There's also a time of seeking out doctor's orders. Now, there is a, the reason I was talking with MSB is they have a backside program where there's a doctor that will sign off orders for these. Again, that was a cost, so I went and looked at it, went, okay, net zero. What if we're net zero in all of this? Um, what will, what would it additionally give us? There were some additionals to it, which I'm more than happy to expand upon in public. But it's something that.
So is there a need to keep the fourteen thousand in there? If no one's willing to, and that's fine, I'm not asking you to, but if no one's willing to do.
But if the superintendent next year decides they wanna do it?
Or if there's a change in the policy.
Yeah, we can talk about that in next year's budget.
Right.
Okay.
I, I think the other piece is that, if I remember correctly, when Devin brought this forward, so we did the moratorium during COVID. Because we were shorthanded and we didn't wanna spend time trying to chase this money when we had other things to do, right? So that's part of the reason why. We also had dropped from, I think we had received like over a hundred thousand dollars in revenue.
They changed, they actually changed the, uh, like, the rules behind it. So it was a lot easier when, when we first started in like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. You could apply out a doctor's backing with just an educational certification. And they, they changed that right the same year as COVID. And it just has become too, it became too costly to get all the signatures in order to get people that are reimbursed. So we were actually, we, I remember Devin doing out the cost analysis, and we would end up paying more than we were getting back.
So I, I think we were, remove it, but I would just ask that if, if possible, to keep an ear out for changes in either, in the requirement, which seems like at some point, this ludicrous requirement will have to change. Enough people are not gonna give their socials. If that were to change at some point, we could, you know, just in future budgeting years.
So there is a, yep, so we can absolutely remove that fourteen thousand for this year. But the, there is a contact that I have. And actually, I email him quite often.
All right, I think.
So, guys, add to that, so what we do realize every year is special education aid in New Hampshire, so that's geared towards students who have a higher cost of them. So above three and a half times the, the average for the state, or above ten times the average. So when a student reaches above three and a half times, and what the state used in fiscal year twenty-three was about nineteen thousand dollars. So that would be, when a student, I don't know where that came from, nineteen thousand. So that's about sixty-six thousand five hundred. So when their expenses are over that, so the district pays for, from zero dollars up to three and a half, so up to around sixty-six thousand. When it's over that, the state pays eighty percent of, of what's over that. Now, once you go over ten times the amount, the state pays a hundred percent. So as we look at students who are out of district placement with, with transportation, that obviously gets you above that three and a half times. So we are realizing more revenue from the state. Now with that, it's a multiple, almost a year process. So where our student services has to get information into the state by July, they get notified by the state somewhere in November or December. Because it, you don't just pay, they don't just reimburse you for transportation, they reimburse you for the amount of days the students were transported. So if a student is absent fourteen days, they're going to, that's not allowable expense type of thing. So then there's back and forth between us or any town in the state, and then you tend to get that check in May-ish. So going, but it's always a year after. So we are predicting that we would get about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand this year. Now, we're, we're due for more of it, but they can always prorate it as well. So if the state only has the amount of money to pay off ninety percent of what it owes to towns in the New Hampshire, then you would get ninety percent of what is allowable. So no town puts in for that hundred percent which they expect to get. So as our, as we have increases for students who are above three and a half times, we will get more revenue in. It's always though, if you look at full budgeting, it's a multi-year process. So if a student went into out of district placement this year, that wasn't budgeted for last year, well, now the town has no real money to use for it. The next year, it, it could be budgeted, it might not be budgeted, and they would get a certain portion of what was expensed the year before, the following year type of thing. So it's multiple years before the kid is, is budgeted, and you're actually seeing close to that, that same revenue hit that same year as well.
So when we've been seeing underspend in prior years, is it factoring in money that we got? Or is the underspend truly in, like, dollar for dollar underspend from what was budgeted?
So the underspend has, doesn't have, doesn't factor into this, because we know by July what we underspend. So we're, we're first reporting in July what was spent the twelve months previous type of thing. So it's not off of the budget, it's, it's off of the actual. And then we said, I said with the DRA, I did like two weeks ago, we use what we put in for July, we don't do a hundred percent of it. And we put that in as what we're expecting to get in revenue, again, not until May. So the underspent doesn't, it, it's not, it is impacted by the underspent, because that's gonna impact the actual. But the amount that we expect to get isn't impacted by the revenue, by the underspent, because it's, we put in for it after we know it. Because it's always a year later.
So that's unrealized revenue that you talked to, talked about towards the end of the school year, right?
It is.
Or unanticipated revenue.
It, well, no, it's anticipated, but typically, we, we put, to an extent, usually, we get more revenue than we put in for, because again, the state can prorate. And that's why last year, we had some of our fund balance come from over revenue, and some of it came from hundreds. So the combination of the two created our fund balance.
So do you have any idea what we're gonna get come May?
So we are estimating with, with DRA, we put in a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I think we'll get more than that, our, our goal, our hope is to get more than that. But if you, you, you can't really, if we're supposed to get like a hundred and forty, I can't put a hundred and forty, they, they might give us less too.
All right, any other questions from the board? Budget committee? None? Board, one last chance? All right.
Just in terms of the summary, if I may?
Yeah.
And I'd like to validate this, if I could take just a couple minutes to do that while we're all together. I think I heard between our last meeting, what, Mr. Totten, you presented on your PowerPoint slides to start tonight, as well as what I've heard tonight. I think I heard that we're okay to reduce the budget by a total of one hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. And I'd like to run through that summary, just so we're all aligned as to what makes up that one hundred and ninety-four thousand. Is that okay?
Yeah.
LMS page five. So on LMS page five, we had the single ref contingency fee of five hundred and sixty dollars that I think we agreed could be removed, as well as the drop one. We can drop eight hundred dollars from the porta potty rental. Right? Did I hear that? Okay. On food service, I know we're jumping around a bit, on food service, page three.
Do you, I just sent my.
So do you wanna project that? Or did you send it to me?
Yeah, so that's what we got at the beginning.
I think we're trying to reconcile to this.
Oh, okay.
So let me just get it up here.
Now you have more than I have, and I'm assuming part of that might be attrition or something like that.
Nope, I haven't even talked to you about, no, that's not in here at all. That's why I wanna validate with you, right? So we have.
We have the single ref.
The single ref for five hundred and sixty dollars.
Down a bit, we have the porta potty for eight hundred.
We have the porta potty for eight hundred.
Keep going down further, because it's a different fund, we have you start talking about food service.
Food service, I have four thousand eight ten, which is the LMS vending, which Lauren confirmed could be removed this evening. I have special services, which we just reviewed. And page four was the removal of four sound systems for eight thousand four oh eight.
Eight thousand four oh eight, yep.
Okay. We also have, I think consensus on the fourteen thousand, all of us will take board, board motions, but the fourteen thousand on the Medicaid that we just talked about. I also have your summary from earlier this evening on electric oil and propane. I think I understood fifty-nine thousand could be removed from electric, CHS, and GMS?
So fifty-nine thousand was already shown, because we had the electric rate in the budget process.
Okay, so what's the?
So that was a decrease from last year's budget. And then, again, the oil and the propane are gonna be part and part. Part of, part of it went down for this year's budget, and then we can realize a greater amount from, from the contractual things.
I see.
These are, yeah, so these are the numbers.
So what, what do we have for electric that can be reduced?
So again, electric has already been reduced.
So there's nothing, nothing new, because that's carried over, your number was carrying over, I see.
Yep.
Okay, I got it. And then for oil?
Oil, we have the five thousand two hundred, because again, oil's only at GMS.
Okay, I thought you presented eight thou, again, same thing then.
So it's, yeah, so we started with fiscal year twenty-four budget, we brought it down some, because I did a three-year average of the amount of gallons. So that brought it down some, and we're able to bring it down more by contracting at a lower rate.
All right.
Two steps to get it down, one step which was realized.
Propane, I had seventeen one fifty, but it's gonna be less than that.
It's gonna be less than that. Fifteen hundred and eleven thousand one hundred.
So that's twelve thousand six hundred. Okay, and I also had LMS radios.
LMS radios are.
For one thousand dollars.
Yep.
Right here.
Six ten.
Line twelve.
And again, I recognize that it's going to take motions for all of this, but I think from what I heard tonight, the board's at least under general consensus to move from nine to eight buses. Which is a reduction of eighty thousand one thirty-two.
Yeah, I don't have that, man, that's okay.
Right, so if I add up those items.
Uh, the only thing I would add is to say, I, I thought Sophia said that she got a quote for mango that came in at fifteen hundred for twenty users. So that'll be an addition of five hundred dollars.
But there's also reductions in that line.
So it came to a difference of forty-one dollars.
Yeah, so it's a wash.
Whether we wanna make a motion for that or not, it's.
Got it, okay.
But the other one in there is estimated, so.
It, it was a wash to me.
The sister hand went from eight people to four.
Four, but then elevation is still an estimation.
I wasn't gonna do anything with that, it was just a wash.
Okay, got it.
So if I add up everything that I just presented, it is now one twenty-seven five ten.
So we would just wanna separate food service from the general fund.
Okay, so general fund would be one twenty-two seven hundred?
So let me, so I, I agree, I put that forty-one, just kind of back up a bit, I put that forty-one in there, but I figure that as a wash as well. So I typically link that in there?
I would just delete that row.
All right, so you had.
One twenty-two seven hundred.
So we're missing, and then Nabyon's three years license, okay, so there was a question of the high school principal Jake, and we got to Nabyon's. He went and checked back, and they purchased it last year, it's a three-year license, so we're able to take out that twenty-two hundred as well. So that, that came from.
And that's at the CHS line?
CHS, yep.
CHS, and that is twenty-two hundred. So that brings the general fund. To one twenty-four nine hundred.
One twenty-four nine hundred and forty cents. Forty cents came from the phone act, sound systems. Where you have.
Are you showing that over something? I just added it under that column.
I'm just highlighting Shane and House.
And then in addition to that, food service at four thousand eight ten, okay.
So line twenty-seven is happening at some, so.
So I have a little bit more for food service, um, so. I don't think I allow you to.
Smart.
No, I can't believe I have permission to do that smart.
Uh, so food, food service too, when we were, when we were first told that we were needed to migrate to Titan, um, there was back and forth on what that cost would be. So we, we were at seventy-five hundred last year on that line. We put in a budget of ten thousand, because we assumed it was gonna be a little bit more, um, and it ended up being less. So we can take the nineteen sixty-five from that line as well, because we need to end at the eight thousand and thirty-five.
So.
I would, I would recommend and agree with everything that's on.
So Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to reduce the budget by one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars, which is all items as highlighted on the spreadsheet, as just reviewed verbally, not including food service.
Second? Second, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to reduce food service budget by a total of six thousand seven seventy-five forty.
Second? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero.
All right.
That's the easiest.
That's the easy, that's the easiest. But we reconciled, so that's half the battle.
Yeah. No math errors. All right, so we are back here tomorrow, and I believe we are here.
So Madam Chairman, I'm also understanding that we're not gonna have full board participation tomorrow?
Correct.
So I don't know what that does for voting.
We'll have to go with who's here.
What if we flip the meeting to the fifteenth?
We talked about that, but it was felt that we needed both meetings.
We need a school board meeting.
We talked about that last week. We needed both, and we have a school board meeting, so.
So what the school would ask, if, if you're thinking about reductions, that you want more input from us, from? If we had a shorter meeting tomorrow and you gave us direction in that, so we can report back on the fifteenth. I think that would be helpful. So, or you guys can give us that direction right now. Wouldn't need to be tomorrow, but.
I mean, I have a running list. And I can certainly share my running list with you now that we've concluded our budget reviews of where I'm thinking motions and reductions would likely be made by me. I don't know if the board would support that or not. Do you want me to share that with you so you can review it tomorrow?
Share it with the board so we can.
I can, yeah, absolutely share with the board. Do you want to verb, do you want me to verbally share it now?
Do you wanna present it? Do you have pivots to present, or you did watch?
I, I can, sure. Absolutely.
Have you had a hand over the cable?
I mean, this avoids us having to meet tomorrow while we're all together.
I don't, I don't know that we're avoiding meeting tomorrow with this.
I don't think we're.
I, I don't think we're voting on any of this tonight anyways. Yeah.
The thought process was, and we presented to the board last week, we said Dr. Jetty and Peter cannot be at the November eighth meeting, that we needed both meetings because.
I didn't know that Mr. Plansy wasn't gonna be here at next week, at this week's meeting.
Well, he said it at the meeting, but yeah, he must not have heard it from the other end of the table. But, I mean, we carved out the night and I think Admin's planning to be there and we've asked them to plan to be there. And so, again, I hesitate to rearrange everyone's schedules.
Uh, man, I do think that our voting, if it's going to occur tomorrow, is a key meeting for all board members to be a part of.
Uh, just a possible compromise would be that if you have a two-two tie sent here and four people would be there, um that you would just park that and revisit it on the fifteenth. So you would not declare that as a failure, you would just say that's a non-decision. Uh, let's revisit all the two-two ties on the fifteenth. And that would allow you to take a lot of action on the three-one votes or one-three votes.
Four-four-zero.
Four-four-zero, right, I'm, yes.
I'm optimistic.
So what's the direction? What would you like me to do? Would you like me to run through the summary, send it? You can take a look at it.
So I, my thought process would be, we're meeting tomorrow. I would like it sent out. I'd like to take a little time to look at it. If you wanna do a quick five-minute summary tonight, I'm fine with that, but I'm also happy to just look at it when it comes out tomorrow and we can have further discussion tomorrow night. Whoever's there, great, we'll make whatever motions we can, and then whatever we have left over to do. I'm also fine to make sure we put an end time on tomorrow. We, I am cognizant of the fact that we've had a ton of meetings. So if we wanna say five-thirty to seven and we're gonna get as much done as we can in that hour and a half, but let people go home, I'm fine with that. But I don't, I'm not okay with just not meeting when we've asked people to carve it out of their schedules.
Okay. All right, allow me to send it and we'll go through it tomorrow.
Sounds perfect.
And I, I like and appreciate your suggestion that we do, we hold the ties until next.
Well, that's up to the boards inside. I'm just offering that as, you know.
Yes.
Uh, cause I think at the budget committee, they declare a tie vote as a failed, right?
Yeah, we typically do too. But I also have no issue with redoing tie votes when the full board is present. I'm certainly not seeking to exclude anyone, but I also wanna use the time we've set aside because I have a feeling we can't get it all done on the fifteenth. In a normal agenda.
If we're talking about three-one, right? If we're talking about a three-one or a four-zero, then Peter's.
You're irrelevant, right? Correct. Well, not that you are, but yes, for those votes.
Practically speaking.
Correct, yeah. No, I think this makes sense and we can put a hard stop tomorrow. We'll get done as much as we can and be efficient and work our way through it.
Who's wedding fiasco is over, I can watch the meeting and be prepared.
Yeah, John, sorry.
So my, my question is, is there anything in Andrew's list that are, are gonna need us to provide more information?
There's nothing else from LMS at all.
Okay.
Is there anything from GMS or for CHS that we would need to provide more information?
Nothing that I'm gonna need more information on, but yes, I have, I have small, every department has you've all done a great job presenting your budgets. So first and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge that. I think for, they're very responsible. They were very modest increases, given everything that you're facing on a daily basis, right? I think for GMS, I'll just say this because you're sitting right in front of me, Mr. Mitchell. Uh, I am going to be presenting to the board a reduction in furniture, right?
On that, let me just say, not that I saw this coming, um for the shipping rate, it's not a half, it's because we've advantaged. So the shipping would not go for management, or if you don't manage.
Okay, gotcha. Um, and then for CHS specifically, I wanted to have a board discussion about the ninety thousand dollars in sending the kids to, was it, was it?
CTE.
CTE, right? Very important program to offer, but a conversation for tomorrow. I don't think I need any additional information. We all understand the criticality of that. I also wanted to talk about, um, or there was, there was an action for Ms. Women to confirm the writing essay part of Mr. Sun's.
Yes, and I actually said that and I need to follow up with Val because.
Okay, so that was on here and then became the graduate signs I wanted to talk to the board about.
Thanks, Mr. Phil, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, that helps us to wrap our heads around.
You're welcome.
Sounds good.
All right, I'll circulate this and get it out.
Any other questions or comments for tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna say, are you opposing?
It's not nine-thirty yet.
Abstained, passes five zero zero. I hope everyone has a good night. And see you tomorrow. And literally call my kids and say, I will be home between nine and nine.